A.M. on the thirteenth of December, 2022, and this meeting is officially called to order. We will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. So please stand, and Gary will come forward and lead us in prayer and pledges.
Good morning, everyone, and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We can say Christmas.
Amen, amen. When you bow your head as I pray. Dear God, in the scriptures, you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, if I pray for our mayor, Brenner Gunner, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assemble a council, I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues of our times. I pray, Father, that as the agenda is discussed and policies are put in place for our city, that the council will always seek what is in the best interest of the people. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. Remind us, Father, that they are in a position not to be served, but to serve the public just as Christ, who is King, came not to be served, but to serve and ultimately died on the cross to save us. I pray that as we journey through this Christmas season, that you will grant us peace, love, joy, and happiness. This I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Repeat after me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. If you come forward to make public comment, state your name and address or SMD area. Each citizen can speak just once per item unless asked to counsel, asked to comment by counsel. Public comment is for three minutes unless extended by counsel or translation services. The proponent-opponent is five minutes unless extended by counsel or translation services. Counsel has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public, and any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. Are there individuals in the audience who would like to make public comment?
She was already there, Mayor.
Yep.
Good morning. I wanted to be here as soon as you finished, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm Shirley Spears. I'm a member of Single Member District Five, and I am here today just to bring gratitude again to the city council and to the mayor. The San Angelo N.A.A.C.P. Buffalo Soldier Memorial will be hosting a groundbreaking this morning at the Paseo, and we have invited counsel, of course, and the public to come and join us. Now, we don't have a time because we were trying to be sensitive to the fact that this is holiday season, people are wanting to be with their families, and we didn't want the council to have to come out on a different day. So about fifteen minutes after the council meeting this morning, we'll be going over around the corner, so to speak, to the Paseo to do our groundbreaking, and we hope that the general public will come and celebrate with us, and it will be an exciting time. This is just proof again of the help that the council has provided to us to be able to put our memorial at the Paseo, and we want to start it off with this groundbreaking, and you'll hear more information at that service or ceremony this morning. So I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for public comment?
Zane White, District Six, at the November fifteenth, 2022 council meeting here, Councilman Tom Thompson made a pathetic, feisty little speech that I'm sure he was very proud of. That speech included multiple intentional misrepresentations of facts and several outright lies regarding my actions related to the City of San Angelo Municipal Government, its elected officials, and its employees. Thompson boldly informed me that all of my future allegations of corruption regarding city officials should be specifically directed to the city attorney, Teresa James, and then Thompson defiantly claimed that such allegations from me would no longer be welcome in this city council forum. Tom Thompson and all city officials need to understand that as long as city government corruption exists, I'll be publicly exposing it in whatever form I choose. Tom Thompson's shameful little speech was followed by a brief statement from Teresa James during which she once again promoted the outrageous scam that certain Supreme Court decisions currently prohibit the issue on sign code violation citations to Lee Fluger regarding his giant rooftop sign at the Cactus Hotel in downtown San Angelo. Teresa's unquestionably false legal pronouncements were followed by equally false comments from you, Mayor Gunner. You somberly stated that the city's actions regarding the cactus sign controversy have not been personal in nature, and then you dramatically leaned into the microphone and claimed that the city's actions have been mandated by law. Mayor Gunner, there's no question that the City of San Angelo Code of Ordinances is the prevailing law in this sign code, code enforcement matter. Chapter twelve of the code, section twelve point zero four point zero zero one, clarifies the aesthetic legal requirements of all signs in San Angelo. Section twelve point zero four point zero one four of the code clearly indicates the following: All signs shall be maintained in a safe, presentable, and structurally sound condition at all times. It's a fact that no matter how desperately you people try to spin it, the Hotel Cactus rooftop sign has not been presentable by any reasonable standards since 2005. In recent months, city officials have disgracefully attempted to silence me with laughable claims that certain Supreme Court decisions currently prevent them from issuing any sign code violations whatsoever to Lee Fluger. The two Supreme Court cases are Reed versus Town of Gilbert and the City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin, LLC. Both of these decisions are absolutely illegally irrelevant to the rooftop sign issue at Lee Fluger's Cactus Hotel. If that's a false statement, then in the interest of governmental transparency, city officials should immediately provide a clear, on-the-record, legal explanation, repeating that statement.
Further public comment? Please come forward.
I'm Jaton Geezy. I'm in District Five.
Just state your name again, we couldn't hear it.
Jaton Geezy. There's a saying that I'm not, I'm sure most of us have heard, it's out of sight, out of mind. I missed the meeting last, I missed the last meeting. My son and I were driving thirty dogs to Ohio, but I'm here today to keep our city's pet overpopulation problem in all of your sights. Closing the city shelter to intake has done nothing to fix the problem, nothing. What is, what it has actually done is made the problem worse and even created more problems. While everyone is at home celebrating the holidays, there are cats and dogs out in the streets with, without food or shelter. More animals are getting run over and killed, more animals are being left to run the street, get pregnant, making more animals and even attacking people. Because the spay neuter ordinance is not being enforced, it's making, I'm sorry, I had to run to get it. It's making all these problems worse. I see post after post on social media of people trying to help. They try to feed their community loose animals, they try to shelter these animals from the cold. Without the city enforcing spay neuter and without providing more low-cost or even free spay neuter, it's a slap in the face to these individuals and rescues. Many have told me that they are in fact, they have in fact reached out to their district city council rep to know of L. No answers, and many times not even a response. Please find the money to, for spay neuter and the manpower to enforce the spay neuter. Please offer feedback to the public. Your silence is deafening. It's not a secret that all of the rescues are beyond full. In 2017, I provided data showing the contributions of just ten volunteers that I know. Back then, it came up to a contribution of $250,000 per year. That's $250,000 that the city, the city benefited from, for free. What will happen if all the volunteers just quit? To date, the only thing that the city has accomplished by refusing to take animals in, take animals in, is clearing their name of future animal neglect and abuse charges or hoarding. It's not right, and y'all know it.
Further public comment?
I'm Henry, and I, my business is in Service Number District Number Three. I just wanted to say thank you for the city, Teresa James, John James, a lot of the city members and staff, Patrick, who have helped with accessibility concerns so far. So far, since I, we have presented in October, we have had the update to the website, including grievance procedures, so I want to make it publicly known that you can file grievance procedures for the ADA and accessibility concerns on the city's website. And also, they added an accessibility accommodation request form, which helps identify if there's an issue in the city that you recognize, how you can get help with that, and why it is an issue, and even what is your idea to fix that. So thank you for taking our recommendations and our concerns seriously. Also excited to hear that by, in our last meeting, we talked about the progress on the ADA coordinator position, as well as the City Committee on People Living with Disabilities, that we should see substantive progress by January of 2023 and no later than implemented by March of 2023. However, currently, as I'm speaking, there's no closed captions on the city's YouTube channel, so I know this was something that was said to be added, but it's either not working today, or this is, again, something that needs to be consistent. There is closed captions, if you use YouTube, closed captions, but those are historically very inaccurate, so I would recommend to the city to readdress that to make sure those closed captions are there. I also noticed there's an item on the consent agenda regarding the ramp, the pedestrian ramp downtown, and I would like to ask, if this is the normal process, to pull that just for discussion. I have a lot of people that have called me about that ramp, and I want to make sure that the disability community's voice is heard, because when it's not, then there's a lot of concerns that can be brought up. I was recently part of leadership in Angelo at the Tom Green County Jail, which I know is not the city's responsibility, but I was told that I cannot participate in the tour because of Daisy, which we can get into the legal yes and no, if I can legally, I should be able to unless there's a high security concern. But apparently, that was not the reason why I was told I can't participate in the tour that I'm scheduled to be a part of. And the reason I bring that up is because I was told that without any background information or any really legal information, and no one to call from the county. So that would be a situation where somebody can call the Department of Justice and make a very valid complaint, and things like that are happening in the city every day. So it's very, very important that the disability community's voice is heard, because there's things like that happening in the city, and I don't want someone to just call the Department of Justice. So I would request that if there's anything that deals with accessibility, like the ramp or the pedestrian sidewalks or walkway, that it's important that the disability community's voice is heard. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Brenner, I've got one.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
So for all the residents that live on Edmund and Glenna Boulevard, the, just give a little background notice here, the United States Postal Service has moved from a delivery system to a, a personal delivery system to a, I guess, a community mailbox down the street. So for the ten to fifteen people that have called the past week, we have heard you, we have talked to people about what that is. That's kind of a federal issue where they place their mailbox. We can discuss public safety and the fact that some of y'all do have to walk about three quarters of a mile with, in distance to get your mail now. I just want you to know, I talked briefly about it with Shane Kelton. We're just starting the topic discussions today, but I just want you to know you've been heard. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. I'll start with Larry to see if there's any items that he would like to have pulled. M. Item M. Lucy?
None.
Harry?
L and O.
Tom?
That's got me covered.
Tommy?
Hi, ma'am.
All right, we will, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of M, L, and O.
Mayor Gunner?
Yes.
We also received a request to remove item C. I think it's marked off on your copy of the agenda packet. That's not ready to move forward yet, so if we could have a revised motion to remove item C, L, M, and O.
All right, so item C has been removed from the agenda for consideration, as there's, the correct information's not available to approve that item. And so, again, I will say the following: We will move item C with lack of information, and then item M, L, and O for further consideration, and so may I have a motion for that.
Move.
So a move by Lucy, seconded by Harry. Any public comment concerning the consent agenda with the exception of C, M, L, and O? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion has been approved. We will now start with item M. Item M is the following: Consider approving change order number nine and number ten to E.S.-O-three-dash-two-oh, Chadburn Street Improvements Phase A Project Contract with Tri-Zac, Ty-Zac Concrete Incorporated, reducing the current $7,588,971.07 project cost by $83,685.07, and bringing the revised project cost to $7,505,286.68. Shane, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Miller, or I guess Karen Hesse-Smith, what questions, or do you want me to go over the project, or?
At the request of Ms. Henry, we, we pulled this item so that you could elaborate a little bit more on how the actual project is affected by the change.
The project, this is just basically, we're moving quantities around, we're reducing quantities and changing quantities within the project itself, and so this is basically due to the quantities of materials, whether that's paint, concrete, those type of things that are a part of the, the deal. We're actually reducing the actual scope of the project itself and saving the city money by doing so.
Always good to save money, but the ramp will be lighted, is that correct?
The ramp will be.
Will be lighted, it will have light, because it refers to the removal of streetlights and installation of new lights.
Were too many streetlights in the plan, so it's not about lighting the ramp.
No, it's not about lighting the ramp itself. The, when we removed the lights out of the, the project, there was actually the streetlights that were, or the actual signal light intersections, there was actually a light that was already created within that design itself, and so when they ordered the poles, they ordered a, they ordered an extra light pole for the signal, signalized intersection, which we didn't need, so we ordered, basically, they ordered too many poles, and so we removed that from the contract.
Handrails?
Uh, the handrails are currently being constructed right now, and they're, should be put up. The, the very bottom ones on the stair portion of, of the, of the pedestrian ramp are, have been installed, I mean, like thirty or forty feet have been installed, but they're currently under construction right now and are going to be installed moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Harry?
My final question is, when are we going to be done?
I am, I am hoping, we, they had originally talked by the end of this month, with Christmas holidays coming up and the way the weather's been, because they've had to actually, the powder coat paint, they've had so much humidity and, and with the rain that we've had, they, they've been slowed down on getting, getting the rails powder coated, but I'm hoping by mid-January at this point. We're in that, we're, we're basically that, we're waiting on handrails at this point.
Everybody's waiting.
Yes, sir. I promise you, I'm, I've been waiting a long time for this too, so.
Thank you, Shane. All right, item L, consider amending.
Need a motion?
You don't want to do them all together? No, we don't. But we can.
I'll do them all together. Okay.
Item L, consider amending W.U.-O-five-dash-two-one Professional Engineering Services of the Upper Colorado Regional Flood Training Technical Consultant with HDR Engineering Incorporated, increasing the contract amount by $104,000 funded by Texas Water Development Board Grant, bringing the new contract total of $1,575,200, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Andy, you're on.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Andy Vasilio, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I just want to make sure that the public understands that there's no tax dollars, city tax dollars involved in this. When they see $104,000 increase, then we get phone calls, and it doesn't come from sales tax or property tax for the City of San Angelo. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct, yes. This whole project is funded by Texas Water Development Board, and so the City of San Angelo is basically just a flow-through entity for the funds coming from Texas Water Development Board to the subcontractor, HDR.
Thank you. Move to approve it. We're going to do all of them together, I'm sorry.
We can go backwards, but we would prefer to go forwards. Item O, consider ratifying an agreement with Encore Electric Delivery, LLC in the amount of $324,545.44 for the installation of electrical delivery facilities at the Hickory Well Field Expansion Site. Shane, you're on again.
This question really is, when are we going to be done with the wells and ready to pump?
We, we've, we've been working along this process, moving along fairly well. They're actually on, they're still on schedule, so the wells should be completed by March of, March, April of this next year, and so we're, we're on schedule, so we're, we're moving along. We've already pump-tested two of the wells, so everything's going good there, so again, the project's moving along quite well. And then from there, we will start, from there, once the wells are drilled, then they will have to tie them in. We have another contract that will come in and start tying all the wells together to bring them into the pump station.
Question I get is, since we had a dry year and surface water is at a premium, people want to know that their water is secure, so we back to the spot where we're able to pump 10 million gallons a day, then I think we can answer that question, so.
Yes, sir, we're, we're, we're well on our way. Of course, we have capacity up to eight million right now, and again, with these new wells coming on, we'll be able to pump up to 12 million gallons a day.
Any further questions for Shane? Thank you, Shane. Now, Gary, you're on. What would you like to do?
Well, so we move to approve L, M, and O.
Yes, thank you very much, and may I have a second? I see Tommy ready to do a second on that one. So any public comment on the three items, M, L, and O?
Andrea Soufley, I'm in District One. Okay, so today I'm representing myself, not any group that I'm affiliated with. The fact that you all spent $7 million on what me and my friends lovingly call the death ramp, because it's, looks very unsafe, we all don't, well, I don't understand the reasoning for the functionality of the ramp. I under, I, I get that you'd want people from downtown to go to the river, because our river is really great, but I think that the funds would have been better used if we had developed the other side of the river for some businesses, some lakeside restaurants, something of that nature. That ramp is very scary, especially if you, even for mobily okay people, it's scary, even when the rails will be up. I think the only attraction to the ramp would be skateboarders and roller skaters, to be honest. It's not aesthetically pleasing, it's not a great, like, beautiful addition to our cute little downtown at all, and it seems quite self-serving to the folks that have businesses downtown, even though I don't really see many people using it. $7 million in this town could go very, very far, as you know. Have, have some of you even driven around your districts? There are homes that have cardboard on their windows or pieces of, uh, it almost looks like Juarez, like pieces of metal for walls. Like, there are people in our town who really need assistance. Or how about our homeless population that I know that you guys don't want to admit that we have? It's there. We don't even have a place that they can go to to get a hand up. Abilene got rid of their homeless population issue. We could have used $7 million for so much more than a ramp that's ugly, not functionable, and most of the people in the town didn't even want it or ask for it. When was the last time you guys did a market survey of what the citizens in this town really, really want or need? When, I mean, when was that? So I'm really not asking rhetorical question, I really want to know. I think even if you had had a town hall about this, it seemed like it happened under the rug, because all the people I've talked to about it have no idea why it was built, and they had no idea how much money had been spent, and it's a gross misuse of funds.
Any further public comment?
Shane's standing out there, and he, I don't think he.
First of all, I mean, the $7,500,000 is not for the ramp, so the total project cost was $7.5 million. It was not $7.5 million for the ramp, and that ramp was required by the grant that we received from TechDOT. So that was a key portion of what that grant required. Shane, you want to add any further comment? Yes, sir.
With partially that grant covered that, portions of those costs, so it wasn't necessarily city funds that were spent on that, as the grant covered those and was required as a component of that grant application, the connectivity.
There you go. Thank you, Rick.
And so we would call a, a public survey of that a CIP, when people can contribute to the CIP suggestions, which they do every year.
Correct, sir.
I would also add, Mayor, that we had several public forums on that design for the Chadburn project, which included the entire design, and so we had several of those held, encouraging people to come. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't come, but we advertise that, we put it out constantly, and we had those forums.
All right, with that, any further public comment on items L, M, and O?
Hello, Kim Henry again with number three. I understand that, one, it was used, some of that money was grant money, but I, both Andre and I actually write grants, including federal grants, and so we understand the concept behind that, and that you have to submit a design and the reasoning behind it. So if you just consider the money that we used for the grant, for the ramp, and that's it, yes, I understand the whole project, $7 million, but I believe it was a million dollars for the ramp, that million dollars could have solved so many accessibility concerns throughout the city and not just in one spot. Again, I, I would, I have asked others if they want to go down the ramp or up the ramp, and nobody wants to. I cannot ask somebody to use their wheelchair to go up or down that ramp. I would like to ask one of you to do that. That's how scary it is, is we're not even comfortable asking people to use the ramp. And as far as it being communicated and people not showing up, I agree. I know people don't show up. However, when you don't believe that there's nobody in the city that uses wheelchairs, or there's nobody here that has a disability, people aren't comfortable showing up. And not only that, but you have to go to them at times. So how accessible is this meeting? How accessible were some of those meetings? People aren't comfortable just coming and showing up, so it's not that people don't care, and that's not why they didn't show up, it's just that people don't feel concerned about if you're living with disabilities in this community, which is why we have brought on this project and concerns. So next time, again, speaking to the disability community, we could have helped, provided priorities or ways to spend that million dollars of federal money differently, regardless of the rest of the Chadburn Street project, but how could we have spent that money, federal government money, for accessibility for real accessible reasons, not for one single ramp that nobody's going to be comfortable using?
Wasn't federal government, it was TechDOT.
It was TechDOT, okay, I'm sorry, TechDOT.
We didn't have an option, so that when we worked with the project with TechDOT, one of the components was connectivity, and one of those was connecting to the river, which connected Chadburn. So we didn't have a lot of flexibility to just, it wasn't money that was allocated for ADA generically, and we could put it wherever. So it was specifically associated to this project, and those dollars then keyed on getting the full component of the dollars. Those were reviewed by TechDOT, those are all approved by TechDOT as far as accessibility standards and so forth. The ramp's not complete. The ramp's not complete. We also held those meetings here in accessible location. We've encouraged those meetings, even with our sidewalk meetings that we had. So I think there are a lot of staff who care about that and want to get us to that level, and this is an effort. So I think, you know, give it a chance to see where the ramp goes once it's complete and how that can be aesthetically pleasing in the area as well as helping. Our first choice was to put in an elevator, but we could not afford that, so maybe the next one will be.
Right, and thank you for sharing that. I think that, you know, the, I've heard from probably about 40 or 45 people that, who use wheelchairs or other accessibility devices, they all said the exact same thing. Why couldn't they have spread it out more and it be a bigger, like, longer ramp, so the incline isn't as high? So that would have been the design, that would have been different and better, and still reach the same purpose, which is that connectivity issue. Having less of an incline as well as having a flat surface, so it's not just a consistent incline, but you have a flat surface to land on, that's comfortable.
Y'all, and there's one envisioned as we look to the future, coming off of maybe along the Oak Side from Chadburn, not from Chadburn, from Concho as well, which is envisioned as a long, more sloped one that actually incorporates that into a landscape that, in my opinion, feels more natural. So as we get into that design, which may be in the near future, we'll see, we'll make sure y'all are included in that discussion.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving items L, M, and O, say yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, consent agendas M, L, and O have been approved with 7-0 vote. We will now move into the regular agenda. An update and discussion regarding the Charter Review Committee's progress on evaluating Section 60.64, Chief of Police of the City Charter. And items, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. So, because this is a discussion and an update, I'm not sure it will be done in, so he doesn't, I know, just making sure he understands, we don't have to live by those numbers on this item. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, Alan Gilbert, here today representing the Charter Committee that you appointed for us to look at the elected versus the appointed Chief of Police. We have with us today some of our members, I'd like to ask them to stand because they work so hard on this. We have Billy Dewitt with us, Candy Poole, and Jeff Curry, some of our members of our committee that's worked so hard and have come up with a recommendation for you today. And so we would like to give you this information. We've already told you about the time that we spent, the things that we did to investigate, to look into. We had our town meetings, we did a lot of talking in the public, we got feedback from the city's website, and we looked at a lot of things. Some of the things that needed to be changed that we felt that we would recommend to you is the qualifications. And so for the committee recommendation that we have for you today is that, right now, the Chief of Police has to be a resident for the City of San Angelo for a period of at least two years immediately prior to his election and shall possess qualifications of elector, that's the only qualifications. We worked a lot of areas, looking at a lot of things to say, if we stay with an elected Chief of Police, what would we want to see? Or are we going to recommend the appointed? So, by bringing this screen up, I think it pretty much tells you that the committee, after all the thought and all the work, is recommending to you that we keep the Chief of Police as an elected position at this time, but make changes to qualifications in order to see that we get the chief that we believe the City of San Angelo wants. There's a lot of discussion and a lot of back and forth with the appointed versus the elected. As a person that's total, was totally in favor of appointed for many, many years, I have to, and I'll publicly admit that at this time, I think we need to seriously, seriously consider looking at the other and going to appointed at the appropriate time. We feel that at this time, the citizens of San Angelo, from the comments and the things that we've talked to them about, we feel that if we recommended to go to appointed at this time, that the citizens are not in a position at this time that they feel that's what they want to do. And we don't believe that recommending to you something that we don't believe would pass is good common sense. And so we are recommending that we change the Charter to require, and these are our recommendations to y'all, that the Chief of Police shall be a continuous resident of the City of San Angelo for a period of at least six months and a resident of the state of Texas for a period of at least one year, immediately prior to the following deadline for the election, and shall possess the qualifications of electors in said city. Additionally, the Chief of Police shall meet or exceed the following qualifications. Be sworn and accepted unless challenged, challenges will be reviewed by the Civil Service Commission. One, they have 10 years as a sworn officer with a minimum of five years demonstrated performance in supervisory capacity, lieutenant or above in the San Angelo Police Department, and are in a similar-sized agency. One, and the next is to have a master's peace officer certificate from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, or bachelor's in criminal justice, or four years of military service. And what we did is we took these because we know that different departments, different places, and people that are with our department, some of them may have a four-year degree, may, some of them may have a master's degree from TECO, and that they equal out. And so we did not want to stop someone from being able to run for election just because they didn't have a TECO master's, they have a bachelor's. And so we tried to make this the best we could, and including the four years of military service. And we also, we looked at other cities, we looked at some of their requirements that they have for appointments, and we're right on the same area as what appointments are for most cities in the state of Texas with these qualifications. So that is, that was our recommendation for the qualifications for the Chief of Police.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
On that issue? Basically, because it does say that you have to have lived here a minimum of six months, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It would mean that qualified candidates would not be allowed to run for office, even if they met all those other conditions, because they haven't lived here, which the issue would be if you had an appointed police chief, you would have the ability for people outside our city to, in fact, put their name in a hat and run.
Yes.
To be clear.
We had those discussions, and, but we did lower it down to six months instead of, and some of that is because if, let's say we had a deputy sheriff that lived outside Tom Green County, and, but they met all these qualifications, but if they knew they wanted to run and they moved into the city for six months, then they could present theirself as eligible to run. You know, that, that's about as close as we can get it to having options, and of course, we have a lot, these qualifications that we gave you right here, and correct me if I'm wrong, and be on the committee, I believe Chief Hired's here, that we have 63 police officers in our department that meet these qualifications, somewhere in that area. So it's not that anybody's being cut out. But yes, the term, I mean, the, the time of being in the city, we did cut, recommend that you cut that to six months. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Any other questions from council?
I like the qualification you've, you've put in here. One thing that folks have been concerned about is the fact that you could have an 18-year-old being the Chief of Police, but what you've got in, in your list there indicates a person at minimum would be 28 to 30 years old. I think folks have been concerned about the, having a qualification at least describes a person who has lived in the world and has education that merits him being Chief of Police, so I like that. But the bottom line in this whole thing is, is the city is going to get to vote on this.
Yes.
And whether they go one way or the other, the city, in the best democratic aspects, they are going to have their say.
Yes.
So I know there's people out there that, they've even accused some people of being communists, okay? That's fine, that's their opinion, but ultimately, the majority of this town is going to decide whether it's going to be appointed or whether it's elected. Is that the bottom line?
No, it isn't. Absolutely not.
And Teresa, Mayor, here's what it's going to be, because you're not allowed to do.
Either or.
Either or. So that's why we're recommending to you that we stay with the elected chief with these changes and qualifications.
It's a yes or no vote on what is presented and what they're presenting, it's not a choice.
Yes, if we present this with this on the ballot, it's yes or no.
Yeah, but the no effectively says that they don't want.
The no just keeps it as elected as it is.
So it'd be 18 years and two years.
Be 18 years, yes. And you are correct, we didn't put an age in there because you cannot accomplish this and be 18 years old. So you're right, you're going to be probably 20, 28 years old minimum, very minimum, if something like that, so. Any other questions on that part?
Questions, comments? Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Our other change that we're proposing is, it says term of office, term of office, Chief of San Angelo shall be for four years. We would like to make a recommendation to the council that we look at this and that, along with serving for four years or until his successor is elected and qualified, unless sooner removed from office by death, resignation, or recall, to align terms of the Chief of Police with single-member districts 1, 3, and 5. The term of the election to be held in May of 2024 will be a term for three years, with all following elections be a term of four years. Now, to answer the question why, is right now we have the Chief of Police set off separately, and it's a separate cost to do that election. We've spent roughly $68,000 in special elections, so this would now time the Chief of Police race up with the council races, so you don't have to spend that extra money in order to do that. So we're recommending that you do that, along with the rest of our recommendation, if the Chief of Police ceases to be a resident of the city or is found to have violated state or federal law, they have to be, they shall be deemed to have automatically resigned from office. We do not have any provisions in our current charter that allows for if certain things happen with our chief, that any type of disciplinary actions can take place. This would provide some safety to the city that if things were not to be good and they violate laws, things of this nature, that it could be a resignation from their position.
Well, you say resignation, so the question mark is, they choose to resign or we choose to have them resign? I mean, I think you kind of got to get specific about that.
I'm going to let Teresa talk on that point.
It says it's deemed to have automatically resigned, so as soon as that finding happens, they're no longer the Chief of Police, because they're going to be determined to resign their position through that action.
And one of the reasons for doing this is because, let's say currently, if there was violations, the only way to remove somebody from the police chief position would be by getting signatures on a recall. Is that correct? So there's no other option?
There's a recall, or you can go to district court and you can file to have them removed from office, depending upon what has occurred.
Okay. Gary, did you want to make a comment?
Just a question here, it says found to have violated state or federal law, doesn't say anything about city ordinances. Is there a reason that that's not in there?
Well, because city ordinances include things like traffic violations, and we're all classy misdemeanors, and we don't believe that a classy misdemeanor is high enough of a criminal charge to remove a Chief of Police from office. The state and federal laws that we're referring to are, of course, criminal statutes, penal code statutes, as well as things like sexual harassment, age discrimination, and those sorts of things that can occur, that right now, if they were occurring, we'd have no ability to remove the person from office.
And I think that's, that's the good, good decision to keep in that, at that point.
So, and if someone has been, so you're saying that until they have found guilty, they would still remain in office? So they would have to go through the process of going to court, them being found guilty, before the resignation would occur?
Yes, ma'am. We, you know, we, we live on a standard of you're innocent until proven guilty.
Making sure everybody understands, we're not trying to.
We, we've got to make sure that everyone is innocent until proven guilty.
Correct.
Now, there can possibly be some contact with TECO that could perhaps suspend someone's license if certain things occur, but we could go into all these different scenarios, which we have looked at, a lot of these different scenarios, that TECO could actually pull their license as a certified peace officer, but then we come up with the question of, well, do they even really have to have a license to be our Chief of Police because it's under home rule and under city charter? And those questions all start coming out, and that's where we get into this problem of being a, elected and the only one in the state, that there's no state law that authorizes elected Chief of Police in the state of Texas. There's just not one.
So the City of San Angelo is the only city in the state of Texas that elects their police chief?
Yes, ma'am. As far as we can find, and we've tried to turn over everything we can turn over, and as far as we can find, that's correct. There used to be, I can remember in the 70s, it was probably close to 20, but it did this, and then very quickly, they, they just all went away whenever a lot of the civil aspects started coming out.
Lucy?
Good question, Judge. What is the reason that they've kind of just dwindled down to just us being left on the board? What was the reason that they chose to go appointed?
Well, we talked to, we talked to several different places, and a lot of it was to get the politics out of the police department. In fact, everybody I talked to said that's the major reason, is because the departments, ever two years or ever four years, became total turmoil whenever it came election time, and especially in the small cities, when you've got 30 police officers and you've got two people running, they said it was very destructive.
Yes, Tom?
So Judge, we get to a question, this is maybe to Teresa, too. There's a question of legal and not legal, which is pretty defined by state law or federal law, whatever it is, but now there's, my question is, you know, there's a question of ethics here, and ethics is a gray area. You know, we have questions about if somebody did something and took something and other people have some influence over them and maybe gave them gifts or things or presented opportunities to them that they can take, while those is not legal or illegal, to me, those things are unethical. And so this totally removes any judgment against unethical behavior. I mean, that's strictly subjective. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody was to get tickets to a concert or to find opportunities for those, that's still not breaking the law. I mean, it's still not grounds for dismissal, correct?
Well, it could be breaking the law, depending on the conditions that they receive those things, but until it's determined that it is breaking the law, that it would not, that kind of what we consider an ethical violation and things we just don't do because we shouldn't do it, would not remove them from office, no.
That would go back to the, the state or the, the federal system would have to bring charges against them. To Tom's question, if it's unethical and they brought state charges or federal charges and they were found to be guilty, then that would be grounds for automatic resignation, correct?
That would be correct, and also, some administrative procedures where somebody's found to have committed violations of sexual harassment or sexual discrimination or any kind of discrimination, age discrimination, those could also be findings. I think that if I were city attorney and this were to happen, which, you know, I hope it would never happen, that I would actually want the Civil Service Commission to take a look at what was done to make sure that they're on board with the removal of the chief as well, so that it's not this body who's doing it, but rather the Civil Service Commission who has more control over me and confer, even though that's not, or over Civil Service, even though that's not, you know, something statutorily they do, it is kind of their role.
Well, I mean, we're making a decision that affects people many years past we're all gone, and so my question is, you know, what do you put future councils and cities in fear of or just, you know, kind of worrying about how, how it happens? But to me, there's a question of, you know, as far as ethical and conflicts of interest, that, you know, somebody could have two or three different other jobs, side hustles, whatever it is, and when it comes down to a point of this in future generations and elected, there's, it's a lot to manage going forward. But I just wanted to make sure the question of ethics here does not fall within what we're looking, it's legal, it's black and white.
A finding by some administrative or judicial body.
So there's no definition of what conflict of interest is?
There is a definition of conflict of interest, and we all are subject to that, and there are certain things that you can do to violate conflict of interest. and there are certain things that you can do to violate conflict of interest laws, like taking gifts and not reporting them, for instance, that can constitute a violation under state law. Those things would be included here, but there are always those gray areas where, you know, I got invited to a concert and, you know, there are other people there and the vendor stayed with me. Well, technically, under the bribery laws, that's still allowed, but it's something that is discouraged and we probably shouldn't do. So, those gray areas would not be covered. The only way to address those issues is through an appointed chief. This is infinitely better than what we have now where the sexual harassment, age discrimination, those things, there's nothing this body can do except maybe counsel the person, but it, those kinds of conditions would be allowed to remain in a police department under a chief who was engaging in those kinds of behaviors under the rules we have now. This at least gives some standard by which there has, if there's a decision made or a finding made, that that constitutes a removal.
The other issue that Tom just brought up is secondary jobs. So in other words, is it perceived or is it stated that the chief of police shall be the only job that one holds? So you, as chief of police, you could have a secondary business, you could have two or three other businesses in addition to being the chief of police?
Yes, that would be allowed under these rules as they are now and as the rules as they're proposed. Yeah, and under our city, HR policies are also allowed, you know, with permission, to have secondary employment as well.
And we've got that difference because of elected official versus an appointed, so what you can actually do, you're gonna be still limited, but this is, at least we have something in here now to work with for this purpose. Because ethically, with law enforcement, they have their law enforcement ethical that they have to go by. But whether or not they can, how they can act upon an elected official, it falls under the same statutorys, which will be the sheriffs. But sheriffs have a state statutory. We don't have a state statutory that provides any of this for us, because there's no state statute for elected chief.
Because no one has one.
Just us.
Yeah.
One other recommendation right quick, so we can move on with this. Under the authority, we are clarifying that and changing it from on the left where the chief shall have the exclusive control, Los Angeles Police Department should have the right to select, employ, discharge, and wield, prescribe the salaries within the monetary limits of the budget, the employees and such department. We've, we've changed that, recommend that you change that. To the chief of police shall manage and operate the departments in according with local, state, and federal laws in addition to city policies. So this becomes part of our charter. They have to work under city policies.
Give an example of why that's an issue, or why the change is recommended.
It just clarifies that, because over here, we didn't say anything about working under the laws or doing anything, it's just the exclusive control. We all know that we have civil service they have to work on. We adopted that.
That's key. I think you need to repeat that, because we do have civil service.
We have civil service, so that controls a large amount of things that happen in the police department. We have state laws that control, we have federal laws that control. We have certain things that control, different things that the chief can or cannot do within that department. And what we're doing is just clarifying it here, the chief, run your department the way it needs to be run for the benefit of the city of San Angelo, but you must maintain everything that you do within the state, the federal, and within our city policies that we have within the city of San Angelo.
There's no reason to add to the, that, the civil service issue?
Civil service is automatically there.
Correct. Just making sure we're clear on that.
I think, I think we're good with that, yes, ma'am. I think so. But here again, Larry, these will all have to be put over here. This is what is recommended. And of course, you as the council can change this however you want to. And whatever you come up with, this is our recommendation, yes or no? That's, that's how simple it's gonna be, yes or no? Yes or no?
I think the committee's done an incredible job of really interacting with the public, getting comments from the public and studying other cities, how they manage. Of course, they don't manage because they don't elect, but trying to get as much information as you can to relook at this and put it out to the public for votes. I think you guys have done a great job.
Well, thank you. They worked, I've told you all that before, they worked really, really hard and, and they looked at it and, and they, they actually took their personal opinions and threw them out the window. They really did. They, they were very professional in how they did it, and I was very proud to be able to work with them.
Right. Any further questions or comments for Judge Gilbert?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to open this up for any comment from the public at this point? So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to add comment to this, please come forward.
I'm Giezy, District Five. Just food for thought, President of the United States has to be thirty-five and fourteen years in the United States. That's it. And putting more stipulations on the qualified personnel, I think just leaves room for down the, down the road, not y'all, maybe other city council. They put a new restriction, another new restriction. And y'all talk about not wanting to give, I guess, the authority, the exclusive authority to, for his, over his department. Y'all are elected and y'all have authority to do things. Y'all vote, but I just think putting more restrictions, the, the public is smart enough to vet those people out, and when they run, I think putting them with the rest of the elections is a good idea, so people are more in the mode and they'll look at it more. But more government involved in narrowing the path and also allowing other people to come in. I don't know how that would work. I mean, we had the school district, people come in from outside and that didn't work out very well. But that's just food for thought.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify that any of the qualifications that are adopted by the election, in the election, those could not be changed by future councils without going to another election. So you could not add...
City charter issue, this isn't a council...
And then the second thing is that, you know, removing the exclusive control of the police department, the citizens actually did that when they elected or voted on civil service and made us a civil service city. Civil service covers employment, selection, discharge, promotion, I mean, vast areas of authority under the police department. So we're just cleaning up language basically there to say that there's not exclusive control because we've already had an election that said they didn't have it, and that's what the local, state, and federal laws, in addition to city policies, is intended to do.
Okay, thank you. You need to come forward if you're gonna speak?
Their authority, I was agreeing with the recommendation. I didn't know if y'all thought I was disagreeing with that. I was agreeing with that.
Well, it's one of the reasons we keep bringing up the question about civil service, so people understand that civil service has a tremendous impact on what happens. Okay, further public comment? One last opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we will then, we don't have to take an action on this, right? So we'll move on to item B. So there is action we need to take.
Well, just direction at this point in time. I mean, if there, we could get some direction on whether or not this appears to be how you want us to present it to the voters, or if there's a whole other option you want us to bring to you and we bring it to call an election, that would be helpful for us because we need to start drafting...
I think that's the reason we asked for comment and from city council, was if there was anything we wanted to add or subtract or do, this was the opportunity for everyone to do that. And from what I understand from city council, there hasn't been any suggestion to change the language. Is that correct? That's what I heard.
We have direction.
You have direction, I'm quite sure. Okay, moving on to item B, consider approving a policy to address repeat open records request, requesters to provide a reasonable limit on the amount of time spent on public information requests submitted by vexous requesters.
Vexatious.
That's a good word. How long did it take you to find that word in the dictionary?
Well, it's from the state, so we're just adopting their language.
All right.
Okay.
All right, you're on, Julia.
Okay, so I've presented, prepared some slides for you guys today. As you can see from this slide, in 2018, we really thought we were buried with PIRs. And at that point, we had received just four hundred and eighteen in that fiscal year. We've now seen a forty percent increase in PIRs that are routed through the city clerk's office. So these numbers were gathered on the sixth of this month, so they're a week out of date now. Right now, we're actually at five hundred and seventy-three PIRs year-to-date, and our projected year-end count will be six hundred and four. So that's actually around a forty-four percent increase.
Is that our calendar year or the fiscal year?
This one is actually, this count is gonna be calendar year. In 2018, we were counting by calendar year, and then the state law actually requires us to count by fiscal year. So all the numbers presented in this slideshow will be actually fiscal year, which is just the last two months. Okay, so just to note, the police department, they keep their PIRs separately. We use the same system, but there's two different sides and I don't have access to that. So what I'm reporting on are the city side numbers only, so just for some context. So this year, since October first, we've had eighty-three unique requesters seeking information from the city side. We're using the term requestor because anyone can request information from us, doesn't have to be a citizen, doesn't have to be a taxpayer, doesn't have to be an individual, it can be a business from out of state, or anyone really. So out of those requesters, seventy-three people requested just one request for information, and that left the remaining ten requesters submitting, on average, three point nine PIRs apiece.
Three point nine or thirty-nine?
Well, thirty-nine total, so three point nine on average per person. So the, those remaining ten people are representing that a small number of people are using a disproportionate number of the PIRs and therefore disproportionate number of staff time hours. So on to the next slide, there were a hundred and twelve PIRs submitted that resulted in a hundred and three hours of chargeable staff time. So out of those folks, seventy-one people submitted PIRs that took a combined thirty-three hours to complete. So again, small number of people using a disproportionate amount of staff time. Sixty-eight percent of time this fiscal year already has been spent responding to PIRs from fourteen percent of the requesters. So those one hundred and twelve hours that I mentioned on the previous slide and the hundred and three hours, those represent only chargeable staff time. So by law, we cannot include any time that Heather or I spend reviewing documentation, seeking clarification from requesters, preparing cost estimates, or redacting, nor can we account for legal staff's time preparing certified letters to the Attorney General's office or providing their legal guidance. So in the past two months, six percent of the PIRs have or will require an AG opinion. So those letters all go to legal, they're prepared, that staff time's not included. And I will note, also not included, whenever we send off those letters, you have to send a minimum of two, they're certified, and they cost over seven dollars apiece. So that's an additional cost to the city. But back, back to the actual hours, you can tell that this hundred and three hours, it's grossly underreported because there's so many hours spent by our two offices that we cannot charge an individual for. On the PD side, in addition to the legal services that city attorney's office provides for us, they're also reviewing some body camera footage, and that takes additional time. So in 2017, the state finally realized there was an issue with requesters that were abusing city's staff times, and, and they allowed us to declare certain requesters vexatious. Now, we're required to adhere to all sections of the Public Information Act, except this one little section. It's not that we are required to follow it, but it's that our governing body can adopt it. So today, we're asking you to adopt this one section so that we can start using this in addition to the remaining parts of the chapter that we're required to follow. And so, like I said, this has been on our radar since 2017, but until recently, we were unable to track each individual request, and so we were unable to declare anyone vexatious. But now that we can track that, we wanted to bring this policy forward to you. So the policy that we're presenting today mirrors Texas Government Code 552.275, and it states that once a requestor uses their allocated thirty-six hours of staff time in a fiscal year, they must pay for all future requests at a labor rate of fifteen dollars an hour. Now, I know you're gonna say that our staff time is worth way more than fifteen dollars an hour. This is also set by the state, so that's not up for discussion at this point. And I, I just wanna say, I know there's been some discussion in the media about this policy. Our office remains extremely committed, as does the rest of the city, to providing publicly available information, and this policy in no way impacts our average requestor. Typically, a person is only gonna request public information for a situational event in their life. So for instance, we see a lot of the one timers. They wanna know about their house plans because they're doing renovations. They wanna report on all of the equipment maintenance for a vehicle they bought in a city auction. They wanna report on the fire that happened at their home. These are one-time incidences, and most of our requestors, that's what they're asking for. And so for them, they might use five hours of time, but we may not hear from them for another four years. So this is not going to be keeping the general public away from getting information or for paying for information. The policy is solely recommended so that we can rein in those people that are vexatious. If implemented back in fiscal year 2022, this would have impacted only five requestors, and there were two requestors that were on the cusp. Of those, only one was an individual. Everybody else was a business that is using this system to further their financial interest. There are currently no users that have exceeded the thirty-six hour limit in the last two months that we've been tracking for this fiscal year, but there are several that are trending to exceed the thirty-six hours by the end of this fiscal year, September thirtieth. And just to clarify, if we did approve this policy, or if you guys approved the policy, it would go into effect today, but it would be retroactive back to October first. And again, that's because the state requires us to count this on a fiscal year. So I know I can speak to the work that Heather and I do, Teresa can speak to her staff, but I did ask Charlie Kemp to be here today in case you have any questions from the department side. Her staff receives about sixteen percent of the PIRs, on average, about fourteen and a half per month. So she can definitely speak to the disruption that it causes to her staff's duties, if you'd like to hear from that perspective, or if you have any questions for her.
I think those are so totally separate. What's happening in planning and permits is so totally different from what we're talking about here.
No, her, her staff is receiving sixteen percent of our PIRs on an annual basis.
And what are they asking for specifically? What are the most frequent requests in terms of?
A lot of the requests, she's here, but a lot of the requests are actually for building plans or copies of old permit certificates of occupancy.
Charlie Kemp, morning official. A lot of the PIRs we get are like, they want building plans, whether it's residential or commercial. They want any kind of information we have on inspections. We get a lot of requests for if there's a sale of the property, they want any kind of violations, building permits, anything that we have on record. And that's going to, you know, we're going to archives, we're pulling plans. If those plans are stamped, we're reaching out to the design professional asking if they'll release those plans, so we can turn those in, or turn those over to the requestor. If not, then that's when we do reach out to city clerk to contact the AG's office. And those are some of the requests we receive in regards to the PIRs. And I mean, there's sometimes a PR could take two hours and then sometimes it can take six to seven hours. It just depends on what exactly they're requesting.
Charlie, before you leave, so let me ask a question. So are these over private property and there's things that they're asking you to find that they could find themselves?
Well, let me give you an example, like a certificate of occupancy. We let the individual know, the property owner, those, on residential, it's maybe kind of understanding because it goes to the contractor, maybe goes to the bank, but on a business, it doesn't, it says that you need to keep that for your records. We'll get a request asking for a copy of that certificate of occupancy because somebody just didn't keep up with it.
How much of your time is spent on... How much of your time is spent on requests that the requestor could do themselves? And that's where I have an issue with. I mean, if you could go and find it yourself, you're an employee of the city. We all pay taxes, so you work on things for the betterment of the city. It's not for somebody's own advantage to have a financial advantage to have you do their work for them. That's what I kind of don't like.
I guess it's really hard to say. It just really depends on the request, or... But a lot of the, what we're doing is just paperwork for that individual, because somebody didn't keep up with the paperwork, I guess you would say.
They have no place else to get that information or that paperwork?
Well, we would encourage, if I received a call, just for example, if I had received a call, I would encourage them to reach out to, like, whoever was the design professional, to see if they have kept copies, or the contractor that built the project, to see if they've kept copies, things like that. Only because I know that it would be expensive if we're having to start charging them per hour, or whatever. We always write down how long it takes us. So if it takes seven, eight hours for us to do that for them, where they may be able to call somebody and get that information. We do try to help them with that, without a PIR in place. We'll look up the information, who was your design professional, who was your contractor? You know, things like that, that they may be able to reach out to those businesses and get that information from.
Is there anything on our website that says, if you have the following problem, here's what you should do? I mean, how do they know where to go?
We get a lot of calls.
I know, so that's my question. So there's no place else for them to get the information in terms of who to turn to and what to do?
We could add something to the website.
Means if you're getting lots of calls for that, it says that there's an issue with people knowing what to do to get the information, where to go, what are the, because they're making a phone call for that reason. So we got to make sure they understand, where else do they look to find the information other than calling you?
Well, I don't know that they would know who to reach out to, who was the design professional on the project, and who was the contractor without contacting us.
Well, that's, I think, the issue, yeah. Agreed. Yes, Tommy?
Julia, did I hear you say that so far since October first, you'd spent a hundred hours? Did I hear that in part of the presentation?
The departments have spent a hundred and three hours. And we have not calculated our time, because we're not allowed to. On a very slow Friday, I spent an hour and forty-five minutes reviewing PIRs.
So how many humans, how many employees would be touching in that hundred hours that you're talking about? How many different employees would be touching those?
I believe there were twenty-three that touched these PIRs, but there's eighteen staff members that routinely, repetitively receive PIRs. The majority of our staff will never, the majority of city employees will never see a PIR in their career. It's very focused on fire reports, permits, animal services. There's specific things that receive a lot of PIRs. And those people are consistently receiving PIRs, where other people in departments do not see very many. And then, of course, police, they're receiving a lot.
That's not in the hundred hours?
They are not counted in any of these numbers, because I cannot see their numbers.
So anything that we chose to adopt would not impact the police department anyway?
No, it could possibly impact the police department. Julia just doesn't have access to their side of the system. There are requestors on that side of the system also, who would probably rise to the level of this. And just for an example, when I came to the city of San Angelo, seven and a half years ago, I had one of my paralegals, who part of her job responsibilities was doing public information, and then one of the attorneys would write the letters, and it didn't take very much time at all. Now, one of my paralegals is exclusively dedicated to doing these PIRs. That has a lot to do with body cams and that process we have to go through. And then one of the attorneys, and sometimes two, work on getting the letters out and those sorts of things. There's been a number of times where my whole office, on a Friday afternoon, will be going through some of the information that we've received from the departments that we're trying to respond and redacting, and looking for things that can't, that we shouldn't be releasing. So the burden of this process on my office has been greatly enhanced. We've tried, and we have made some progress on putting more things online that people routinely request, but like, the reports for the fire department, some of that contains medical information, so we can't do that. And so that's not a total solution. We've also done things like change our contract process, so it frees up attorney time reviewing contracts, because it's more standardized, so that more time can be devoted to this process. But it is taking over parts of my office, as well as Julia's office.
Yes, Karen?
I have, excuse me, I have three questions. Could you just repeat? I think I heard you say that there was a small group of offenders that are either exceeding or close to exceeding the fifteen hours per month, thirty-six hours in a fiscal year, and that those, that body was not necessarily private citizens. They were businesses, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I think we want to reassure the public that their desire to have information provided to them, and that the government remain transparent is really critical, especially these days. We live in a time, unfortunately, where people are very suspicious of government and government overreach. So thank you for confirming that. Are your records paper-only? Do you have to physically go and pull the paper?
So our department serves more, typically, we serve more as a reviewer for what is submitted. Each department has varying degrees. A lot of the fire reports are online, permits are in our system. Some of our computer systems are older, so you may get a report, but it may not be exactly what you would pull if you had your "rathers." But a lot of our files are scanned. And so we're seeing that a lot of people are just able to attach a file. But it doesn't cut down on the time for records that are older. When we get searches that are, I want to see all certificates of occupancy since two thousand and eleven, or things of that nature. You may not have documents that far back that have been scanned in. But as a general rule, the city departments are scanning more and more of their documents. And more of our work processes are just done online now, with it being the age of the internet, you know, most things are electronic these days.
Final question. Have you noticed any particular pattern in the types of requests that you're getting in this period of time between two thousand and seventeen and today? Is there a topical thread that?
We get a lot, I kind of polled the folks that would have been vexatious for two thousand and twenty-two, had we had this policy in place. Zoning due diligence, solar panel research, permits for, so that you can give somebody an insurance discount if you've recently repaired your roof. So it's insurance companies reaching out to individuals, saying, you've done a repair on your roof, you might be eligible for a discount. Investment properties, real estate due diligence, and property surveys. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Larry.
About the limits. It seems to me what you're describing is a certain number of these will be accepted during a period of time. And then after that, what do people do?
You still have the ability to receive the documentation, you just have to pay for it. So this policy just says that once you reach that thirty-six-hour-a-year threshold, then you're responsible for paying fifteen dollars an hour. And some of these larger companies are probably going to do it. This is just the one thing that we have as a possible lever to help control our workload. So we're just asking that we can adopt it, see if it works, it may not.
How many of the requests, the PIRs, that you have gotten, do you think would not have existed if you said, well, we're going to charge you the fifteen dollars an hour for what could be up to another ten hours' worth of work? I mean, at what point does establishing this change the request?
It's hard to say. Sometimes we'll get a request that's voluminous, and we will give a cost estimate. For anything over three hours, we like to give a cost estimate for, so that we can try to recoup some of the city's cost of labor. And so sometimes we never hear from that person again, and it's considered withdrawn. Many times, people will say, what if I was able to reconfigure my request so that it was just for this information? This is what I'm really seeking. So we do see that at times that does help. But then sometimes you may have a larger company, and they're just going to send you a check for seven hundred dollars and ask you to do the work anyways. So it's really a mixed bag.
So you don't believe that this policy change will change the number of requests you get? What this policy does do is increase the expense of the request, but not changing?
I think it will cut down on some requests, but we, there's no way to know for sure.
My concern is, as a private citizen, you know, I have no problems with this in terms of corporations and, but the private citizen, if he gets in there last in line, he's getting charged for it, which I'm not sure that that's equitable.
No, no, each individual has thirty-six hours. No, they'll be fine. And just to touch on that, we would love to say, if you're making a profit off of our information, we're going to definitely charge you every time. The state does not allow us to do that. We cannot differentiate between an individual or a corporation. So this is just a policy that would impact everybody, because it has to. And that's why we weren't able to adopt this in two thousand and seventeen. We did not have a way for our software to count this, and the state specifically says, you must be able to record the amount of time used for each PIR, for each individual, before you can deem anyone vexatious. So that's why it's taken us this long to get to this point. Otherwise, we would have brought it forth in two thousand and seventeen, because we did have issues then, but PIRs have been growing exponentially since.
Are there questions? Yes?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on something, or making sure everybody's clear on something. If these numbers continue going up, we don't do anything about it, at some point, we'll need more staffing to assist with this, which is unfair to the citizens that are unvexatious. They're just requesting their normal items. It's not for citizens to be paying for this extra staff. Now, if we implement something like this, this extra money's coming in, and we still have a high number, at least the money that's coming in will help pay for that extra staff. So those vexatious individuals actually end up paying for it. I just want to make sure I made that clear.
So if you take a look at two thousand and twenty-two, and this policy would have been in effect, how much additional revenue would have been received?
From my calculations, from the city side, it would have been around five thousand dollars. So it's not going to pay for an entire individual, but it does make steps in the right direction. And PD will be, if this policy is approved, PD will be doing it as well. Their letters also indicate the time spent per request and overall for the fiscal year. So if we adopt it, PD will adopt it as well, so that there'll be revenue from their side as well. And they do have, I believe, a much larger issue than we do.
I just wonder if changing a policy that would, in fact, simply raise five thousand dollars, if it was a policy that would impact financially a thirty-thousand-dollar issue, it would seem to make more sense to, in fact, change policy? I'm just not sure changing policy for five thousand dollars makes sense. If it's additional, a lot more money than that, and it's really costing the city a whole lot more, then I'm a little more interested in it. But if it's a five-thousand-dollar issue, I don't know. Somebody else would have to chime in on that.
I think you're looking at it as the amount of revenue that would be raised, but the amount that it would save in staff time would far exceed the five thousand dollars.
But do you think that this will reduce the requests? Because that's what you're saying, is if we do this, the number of requests will diminish. And if that diminishes, then it requires less time for the staff.
I think, here's my point on this. We hope that it works. If it doesn't work, I think you need to be prepared in the next budget cycle to be adding somebody to Permits Department, to be adding somebody to my office, possibly to Legal, possibly to Fire, to PD. It's a big issue. I may not have stated it clearly enough, but PIRs are a big issue. If we can do anything to possibly limit them, I think we should give it a shot. I don't know if it will work, but not doing anything is not going to work.
Yes, sir, Tom?
I think what we're going here, it's the repeat. People that do it constantly. I can take the requests that I've gotten, and I can know if somebody says, hey, there's a PR coming, I know it's one of two people. And it's never changed anything in the amount of time we've all spent on it. But I'm kind of like Brenda, everybody deserves a chance for a PR. I mean, there's, if your kid gets thrown in jail or something happens, that's not the people we're targeting with this. It's the person that knows that it doesn't cost him anything, or her, can go in and throw five of them up within a calendar of a quarter. And it takes a lot of time, and to this point, has not caused any problems. So Mayor, I'm in favor of going with it, but I really see your point of, you know, it doesn't generate funds, but it's a, I think it's a preventative, and we all get the same ones from the same people over and over and over. And it's never...
I agree with that.
Larry, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
As we've stated already, it's not to generate revenue, but it's applying a penalty for those people who choose to do this. So it could have some impact on the vexatious requestors.
Yes, but you, and the point is the fine, okay? If we're being told, okay, if we don't do this, we're going to have to hire five more people to curb the problem. And yet, we're looking at five thousand dollars. So how does five thousand dollars equate to five more people? Now, if we think it will impact it, and we think it will slow down those two or three people that are the ones who request the most PIRs, then that would seem to make sense in an effort to do it. But if two or three people out of the, what was the total number of people? Julia, what was the total number of people?
This year, eighty-three requestors.
But two, how many were the repeated?
So far, three for this fiscal year.
So the question mark would be, does this policy only impact the three out of the eighty-three?
That's correct.
So very small percentage?
Very small percentage.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Billy Clemens, the fire marshal. Kind of a little too close. Sorry.
We can hear you.
PIRs come through my office pretty much every day. And it does affect my staff a lot. We had a recent PIR come through. A lot of folks that do construction work send PIRs through my office. And it takes a lot of time to walk through these PIRs. The one in general that I'm talking about right now, the gentleman wanted to ask us to go back for the last six to eight months on every fire that we went to, wanted addresses of all these properties. It would have taken my staff eighty hours of information to come through for every fire that we went through. And that's the kind of PIRs that we're trying to reduce, because that kind of time takes away from my staff. And I'm already short-staffed as it is. So if we're getting those kind of requests all the time, it can impact my staff and what we're trying to do as a team.
And I, again, I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm just saying what the statistics you're providing today say, three out of eighty-three people. So you're still going to have eighty people still requesting PIRs that might or might not qualify underneath this. And so I'm trying to determine how big of an issue is it? And I'm perfectly willing to approve a change in it. To help everyone out, I just want to make sure that we think what we're asked to approve is really going to make a difference. That's all, I'm just trying to make sure we're clear that three people might be impacted by this. Is that really a policy we want in place to impact three people?
I understand your concern, but if you look at this, seventy-one of the requestors combined used thirty-three hours. So they're using less than half an hour of staff time. That's what you expect out of a PIR. It should be providing a simple document, and you move on to your daily work. Twelve of the people resulted in sixty-nine hours of work. It's disproportionate. So yes, it's three people, but it's three people...
So, yes, it's three people, but it's three people that have already used around 40 hours of staff time combined in two months.
See, 'cause that's the issue. The issue is the following, is that I'm not sure this additional expense is gonna change those people's requests. Will they... If they have to spend an extra $25, is it really gonna change their request? Because my guess is they can afford the $25. And again, I get it. I understand the need to cut down on ridiculous PIRs, but I do not want the public to think that what we're trying to do is shut down their ability or their... To create hangups in terms of requesting a PIR. And statistically, the numbers, I don't know, they're... They don't read well.
I do wanna remind everyone, too, that they talked about there's certain hours we can't even charge. And again, that's coming from Teresa's office and Julia's office as well. So, all those numbers, actually, when you start talking about revenues and what have you, the whole goal part of it is, of course, to reduce those numbers. I know that... I know for a fact, one individual that at times, maybe not this year, but in previous years, you'll have between 7 to 15% of the requests that come through is from that one individual. Again, Mayor, we know what we're saying right now is that really, the great majority of people that need help and need information will get it. That's not an issue. Now, if you're that individual, and you know who you are, who's requesting numerous requests per year, and it's taking up a lot of staff time, then it's affecting, yes, you. It's affecting you. But the average citizen that wants information is gonna be, as Julia said a while ago, it's half an hour maybe at the most. That's not a problem for us. I think that this policy alone, even giving it a try, will give us an understanding. You could even say, "Hey, let's bring it back in about three months and take a look at it." But if anything, I think it helps more than anything than what we have in place right now. Right now, what we have in place is not working.
Yes, Tommy?
I wanted to add one more thing. We do have a couple of contractors. Every month, we do receive a PIR from them, asking them for copies of their permits, copies of their inspections, because they don't have that person in place in their business. So, they kinda rely on us to do that for them, and they do that through PIRs. And, you know, we're kind of in hopes that maybe this would help them understand the time that it is taking us, because, you know, they are... They make a copy, they just write out the date, and then resubmit. So, every month, we're generating them, almost helping them run their business. And unfortunately, and that does take away from somebody else that may be coming in, and we're trying to...
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, I apologize. So, that does take away from some of the other job duties, trying to help other people with their projects and everything, because we're trying to help run this business for a contractor.
Go ahead, Tommy.
Mayor, to move us along, I'll make a motion that we adopt the policy as presented by Julia.
Public comment? I think what we need to do, and I would say this, is that what we need to do is determine a timeline on this to... For re-review and see if it has had any impact. So, I'd like to see this brought back in six months for rediscussion in terms of if it has had any impact in terms of the workload. Yes, Joe?
I just wanna remind you, I'm not that... I mean, I'm in the news media, and I'm not that concerned about this from a news media perspective, except to say that the policy you're making today is gonna outlast you and is gonna outlast me. And you gotta look at how this can be used in the future. Future councils, future news media people, to suppress information from the city. So, I mean, you gotta look at that. You gotta think about that. I will say that from a news media perspective, paying for information can become very expensive. The margins are really, really tight. If... I'll speak for my competitors. If I'm KLST or KSAN or FOX, I don't have a lot of money from corporate to do stuff like this, to do investigative reporting. That's why they don't do a lot of it. From my perspective, trying to make money off of investigative report when I can go right down the street on Sherwood Way and right on about three crashes, and I get enough traffic for the day to make my quota. You know, investigative reporting is expensive. It takes a lot of time. So, look at what you're talking about as far as what the news media exceptions are in this deal, because the news media is... They're the watchdogs, or the guys who can shine a flashlight into this. One of the concerns I do have is minor, but you don't really define what San Diego Live would be. I mean, I don't have an SEC license, for example. So, that's... My biggest concern on this is looking way into the future. When you're not here, and how could this be used to suppress information out of the city? Thank you.
All right. So, there's been a motion and a second, but I would like to ask that that motion be... I don't know if I can do this right now. Maybe it has to be voted down. But I think part of the motion has to be that this needs to be re-reviewed within a certain amount of time to see if it's effective or not. I'm just, again, the numbers don't work for me. And so, I need to make sure that it accomplishes what you think it will accomplish, or whether it just makes us look like we're trying to shut people up. That's my concern, and that's all.
Mayor, if I may?
Yeah. You, and then you.
Julia, how much time do you think you'd need to kinda get a pretty good reading before coming back to City Council? I know the mayor suggested six months. Would that suffice?
We can try six months. I think the problem is, is that it's a full 12 months is the way that the state designed it to be calculated. So, I don't know if we wanna say bring it back in October. I don't know what you wanna say, but the state did design it to be a 12-month program.
I wanna know in six months, how many repeat offenders qualified underneath this policy? Larry?
I was just curious on whether we can table this for further discussion.
Well, what further discussion would you like to discuss on it? What are the... Name a couple of questions that you have.
Well, I think we've been surprised at the impact that this could have in the media long-term. It also could have... And as I understand it, the vexatious people, it's not a question of the numbers, except when it gets into the depth of what their requests are. I'm not sure we have an answer for that, because if that person is asking for the moon, then that's more time spent, but it still counts as just one. Understand what I mean, ma'am?
Well, one times how many hours? 'Cause again, if you're down to what we talked about, three or four people, it's probably pretty easy to figure out if statistically, what kinda timeframe each of... I mean, we're trying to... You know, we keep talking about how much it costs us. So, if it's X amount of cost, we have a way to determine that, 'cause that's what we're talking about, is it costs us X amount of money to do all of this. And if X amount of money is gonna be required to do all this, we're gonna need extra staff. But yet, the dollars we're talking about don't add up to what you're saying in terms of needing more staff. So, the whole thing doesn't seem to mesh well with me. That's... And if we need more time to talk about it, we need more information, we need more statistics, we will have to vote to... We would take a vote on that motion and deny the motion to be approved right before we bring up a new emotion? A new motion? Just a minute.
But I'd like to address Joe's comment for just a second. I mean, this is something that's allowed by state statute. So, a future council, even if you don't do this, if they wanna control the rogue media or whatever, they can then pass a similar policy. And because it's a policy, it's one reading of council, so one reading of council removes the policy. It's not like a charter amendment, which is there until the citizens get rid of it. Policies by their nature are very easily to amend and adopt and change. And again, since it is allowed by state statute, unless that statute changes, any future council would have the same ability to do what we're asking you to do.
Lucy, you had?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Julia. Julia, is this kind of like what you call and ask us to do, to go and look at all the stuff from a year ago and...
That's correct.
That's a lot of time in our own daily lives.
That's correct. And just to also address the media, on fiscal year 2022 and to date, none of the media outlets have come anywhere near reaching any sort of threshold. I don't actually believe I've received any PIRs this year from the media to date. But most of the media calls and calls a department head and says, "Hey, can you provide more information on this policy?" They're not typically doing a public information request. They typically know who to contact in each department, and they reach out directly, or reach out to Brian Groves and kinda ask him for some guidance.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second, and we've had comment from council certainly. So, is there any further comment from the public?
Easy District Five. I was just gonna ask if, when y'all go to evaluate, how that's working to try to maybe do what he was talking about, making it where people could do their own research, easier access, you know, some kinda menu from the city's page. 'Cause like, I mean, when I file a lien notice for at least 10 years, I file a filing fee. They scan it in. It has to be in it. I mean, that should be available. Let somebody... Let those people do their own research. So, just making a menu so that they can go do their own.
Well, that's what I was asking, if we had posted on our website, direction. And I know some people don't like to read. They just wanna make a phone call or send an email. They don't really wanna do the work. I get that. Any further public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will... Yes, Larry?
Could we have the resolution repeated?
No, it's not a resolution. It's a motion. The motion is what? Tommy?
Approve as presented by Julia.
And the second was that as well.
Does that include a possible six-month trial period on this?
I think we could get that in our Friday packet.
Well, no, we need it part of the motion or not. If it stands as it is, we would vote on no time limit, no anything, just as a new policy, we would choose to do this. 'Cause that's the motion on the floor. Unless Tommy amends his motion on the floor, that is the motion we would be voting on. And we could reject that motion by a vote and then create a new motion inclusive of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, with that, the motion on the floor is as presented. So, all of those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Aye. Two... Wait, we don't... These numbers didn't add... Okay. Let's start. Four people don't make. Okay. All those in favor of approving the motion as presented, I'm going to go one by one. Tommy?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Harry.
Yep. Mayor Gunter, no. Lucy?
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
And... All right. So, the motion passes two, four, five to two. All right, we're moving on. We will go into item C, consider authorizing tax increment reinvestment zone funds in the amount of $105,382 for the purpose of maintenance activities within the zones, including maintenance of landscaping, weeds, trash pickup, and similar tasks to ensure aesthetic streetscapes along streets within the north and south tiers areas. You're on, John.
So, that pretty much summarized it, but I'll just go into a little more detail. The proposal is to use both north and south tiers funds for maintenance, including maintaining landscaping, lots of the landscaping, the new landscaping on Chadburn, but also the older landscaping on North Chadburn, weeding, picking up trash. That's one of the things after one of our town hall meetings, one of the comments was, could we use this money to pick up trash, make the roadways look better for the businesses? And so, this proposal came from the Parks Department. It would include upfront equipment costs of about $43,000.
And what's that equipment?
It's detailed in your packet, but it would include a vehicle...
I know, but say for the public. This is the public meeting.
Yeah, it would include a vehicle, and then just some tools, you know, that would be used for trimming trees and that sort of thing. The Parks folks are here if you have more detailed questions about the specifics included in their proposal. It would also include annual operating costs of about $62,000, largely for labor for the folks that would be assigned to doing this. And then, so the total first-year cost would be about $105,000, but then the recurring would be about $62, although that could increase a little bit each year based on labor costs, you know, with increases. It's anticipated most of the work would be in the Chadburn corridor, although it could be done throughout the tiers if there were special, you know, let's do something on MLK or Harris, or, you know, it could be used throughout. We looked at this a few different ways as we talked about it with the tiers board. About 37% of the Chadburn Street corridor is within the south tiers, and 63% is in the north. So, that was the first we looked at splitting it that way. So, 37% of the money from the south and 63% from the north. But then, we sort of went back and forth with that discussion and ended up deciding just to, hey, this is gonna be done in both sides. There's proposals for more landscaping on the north Chadburn corridor, so let's just make it an even 50-50 split to make it easy as we move forward. So, again, that's a very brief overview. I will mention, as noted in your packet, this did go before the tiers board. They recommended denial of this funding, so they did not recommend using the funding. Their concern was largely that the limited amount of funding, particularly in the south, would be better spent going towards incentive projects in the south, and they didn't wanna pull even this fairly limited amount of money. I mean, $60,000 a year, that'd be about $30,000 a year from the south, out of an annual allocation between $250,000 and $300,000. So, a substantial percentage, but a small percentage. They just didn't feel that that was the proper use of tiers funds.
That is part of what can... The tiers can pay for.
Yeah, it's absolutely an eligible expense with tiers. The board just felt like they did not want the tiers money to be going towards this. They thought that this was something that the city should just be doing if we're gonna clean up streets, pick up weeds, you know, pick up trash, that that should just be done by the city. But I'll add that one of the reasons we proposed this is what we're... What this is proposing is a greater level of service for this area than what we do citywide. So, if we just go with citywide policy, we don't routinely have people going, picking up trash on city streets. We don't typically trim trees, bushes, those sorts of things throughout town. And so, this is... This would be using tiers money to give an expanded level of service for that area.
I know on Mondays that the trash cans are overflowing, and probably looks like there oughta been three trash cans, not one trash can. So, who's responsible for picking up the trash in those trash cans that are part of the streetscape program?
I guess I would defer to somebody else to answer that, but with this program, that would become the responsibility of the... These tiers funds would help pay extra staff to do that more regularly.
When we began this process on Chadburn, we said that we would need to allocate funding to maintain that once complete. During the construction process, of course, the contractor and Shane may be here to speak to it, if I misspeak Shane, but contractor maintained the site as that has finished off. The contractor's no longer doing that. They are maintaining like the tree... The plant materials, I believe, for a year.
The mic. Rick, no one can hear you.
I'm sorry.
Do you have a mic?
Did you hear the whole first part?
Well, we might've, but I'm...
I did have a mic, and it's on.
The public isn't here.
It's on. Put it closer. Is that any better? It's on. I can't do it any better. Maybe that mic's working?
Throughout the construction process, the contractor was responsible for maintenance of the side, of the entire side, as we have started turning that over to the city as they've completed. We have... We first started off with street and bridge, and in conjunction with the Parks, kinda working hand-in-hand. Sometimes, street and bridge guys would be, you know, on Mondays and Wednesdays, street and bridge guys would be there, and on, you know, Fridays and whatever, we'd... Parks guys would be there and kinda tag teamed it. Parks has really taken a lot stronger role in that here lately, and so they've started working and picking that up more often. So, the guys are going down there, what, Mario, you know, three times a week?
Yes, sir.
Yep. They're down there three times a week to actually collect the trash out of those trash cans and replace the liners, is what they're doing right now. The contractor is still doing bed maintenance and will be responsible for plant... Replacing any plant materials for the next 12 months.
Is there a timeframe?
It's a guarantee. Basically, they're guaranteeing their plantings is what they're doing, and so it's a guarantee to replace those. However, once we've actually signed off on the project and it's completed, then it will become the city's responsibility to maintain those beds, whether that's pulling weeds. We have seen quite a bit of remoter growth in a few of them, and so to, to, to get that pulled out and get that out of there, to keep the beds clean, that will become the city's responsibility at that point. So again, moving forward, there's not necessarily any extra staff anywhere to really put somebody down there every day to take care of this, kind of like what we would believe the enhanced expectation would be for this project. But again, that's a council decision, how y'all want to move forward, so.
Well, I know that when downtown was, was selling the trash receptacles, they had an agreement with Republic to pick up the trash out of those trash receptacles that the downtown area was selling. So how does that work with this?
I believe that those receptacles are still down there. I'd have to actually visit with Dell to see exactly how many of those receptacles are still down there. I believe there's five or six still in the downtown area. The Republic does have a, or has an agreement with Downtown San Angelo to, to collect those. Currently, there is no, no contract or anything associated between the city and Republic to actually run a big truck to go through and replace those, of course. That's also, instead of just dumping a can, we do actually have liners within those cans, so it makes it a lot easier. And they're a lot smaller, these cans that we've placed along Chadburn, there's a lot more of them, but they're, they're smaller in nature than those larger cans that Downtown San Angelo placed there.
Are there further questions for Shane since he's at the microphone? Okay, thanks Shane. All right, so with that, is there a motion for approval?
I have a couple of questions quickly.
Oh, sorry.
I'm curious to know what, what, if any, burden is on the individual property owners to particularly deal with trash, weeds, minor pruning, and general maintenance. I'm very happy to see the tree pruning and the irrigation on there as designated targets for this particular project. We want to take care of that for sure. But the very fact that the tiers board voted against this, I think we, we have a couple more questions, and that's my first one.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I can speak to what obligation the property owners have. That did come up both at town hall and the tiers board meeting. I think some of the tiers board members felt that that should be the owner, the property owner, their obligation. Even if it's not a legal obligation, they should pick up in front of their place.
You know, in some cases, the question mark would be, is it mine or is it yours? Because it's kind of between our two businesses. So it's meant for a public use, not the business's use. So there becomes a conflict in that conversation, is, is this for the public's use? Or is it an individual business's use? And that's always become the issue.
And that was the concern raised by the other side of the argument, some of the board members, where that, well, even if property owners should be doing it, many of them aren't. And so something like this would ensure the whole corridor looks nice. And my business on North Chadburn isn't dependent on my neighbors picking up, even if I do it. And so this would give kind of a consistent theme throughout. But as you mentioned, that ultimately, the board came down on the side of not recommending it in this case.
To add to that just a little bit, and I'm sorry if this didn't work good, but the, really the intent, I think the owners do a pretty good job of picking up, you know, in front, if it's on the, on the ground or something. But this crew really focuses a lot on picking up the large receptacles, making sure that trash is hauled off in the big receptacle areas, and of course, if there's something on the ground. But I think in general, the property owners downtown do a good job of keeping the streetscape picked up and, you know, put into the receptacles.
But, but, I mean, when we're talking about weeds growing out, grass growing out in certain areas, you're going to have certain areas of downtown that look really nice. Other areas will not look as nice until code enforcement can get in there and enforce it. And even with an enforcement, you typically have over 10-day period before anybody can actually do anything about it. So you're going to have certain parts of the downtown that look nice and others that look terrible. And there's not going to be that consistency that we're looking for.
Code ordinances is not going to work because this is public streetscape. It's not individual business streetscape. It's public streetscape. And I think we're not going to have city code ordinances against a business because that tree is out front, and in that tree out front are weeds growing. So I think, like many things, if it's public, and this is public investment back into a district, we want to make sure we maintain it at the highest level possible.
Maren, I do want to add, when it, you definitely don't want a property owner to go out there and trim a tree and kill it.
No.
Just because you think it's your responsibility, so we have to be really careful of that.
Or a plant looks like a weed, and it's not a weed, it's a plant. So I think that some professional management of this is very key and very important. We've invested in it, now let's make sure we get it taken care of and make sure that the investment we make reflects what we've chosen to do here.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second.
Not yet.
We'll open up for public comment, and you can make a public comment.
In anticipation of the next item on the agenda, the north tier zone is going to have nearly a budget, nearly have a fund balance of $3 million. We're talking about half of 1%. I, I don't, I don't see why you just don't charge 80%. In the, the tiers board, their concern is the burden on the south tier zone. The north tier zone has a, a nearly $3 million fund balance, not here, not far away. So my point would have been to make the motion with 80% of it being paid from the north tier zone.
You can ask to amend that motion on the floor. Would you like to do that?
How's that idea sound to everybody?
Make a motion, amend the motion.
They already got two.
Are you willing to have that motion amended?
I, I'm willing to have that motion amended. I think that the overarching concern, when I had a question or two for John, was the fact that the tiers board pointed to reinvestment, not maintenance. So while I personally want to see the city look beautiful, be cared for, be consistent, we have to, we have to treat people fairly. So yes, I'm, I'm open to your amendment.
I mean, I look at it, when you buy a home and it looks one way the very day you bought it, you know, six weeks down the road, if it needs, the lawn needs mowed, you're probably going to mow it. I mean, it's all about how we present ourselves. And I think if there's funds available, let's do the best job possible. And if it's an issue, whether it's charged to the north versus the south, we all benefit. The district benefits. So I think that you just made an amendment to the motion, and that amendment to the motion is that the northern tiers pick up the entire expense of this. Is that what your motion amendment is? No? I'm just making, let him answer, he's the one who made the motion. Then we'll go to the next one.
My motion was to have the northern zone pick up a minimum of 80% of it, because they have.
That's the motion, amended motion. Is that the amended motion Karen?
Technically only Karen can amend her motion.
She didn't, she made the motion. He asked amended, do you, are you willing to have amended? She is willing to have it amended. Okay? And then, we have a second for the amended motion.
No.
And she says, no.
It's like, how did we get to 80? From, from these numbers, so.
Listen, 80% isn't going to change. There's almost $3 million sitting in the north. $100,000 a year is not, 80, $80,000 a year is not going to break the northern tiers. It just isn't.
Save the trees.
Save the trees, save the landscape, save the investment, how about that? Let's start all over.
Do we have to vote on that? What's the legal process right now?
We're waiting for a second on the amended motion, so if somebody wants to second it.
I second it. Okay, there's an amended motion to accept as presented with the exception of charging 80% of the expense to the northern tiers with the remaining 20% charged to the southern tiers. That is the motion on the floor, and that is the second, and it is open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Two, motion passes five, two. All right, the next item is item D. Discussion Direction on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Regarding Moving Boundary Lines Between the North and South Areas and the Issue of North Tiers Funding For Nonprofit Organizations. John, you're up.
Yes, this, this item came up with discussions, you know, you may recall recently, we talked about north and south funds and how to distribute them. As part of that discussion, one of the questions and comments that came up was, is the north-south division line in the right place? And so we're bringing this to you as a discussion item. This is not for action today. It needs to go to the tiers board first before action is taken for their recommendation. This has not gone to them yet. I believe it's scheduled for their next regular meeting in January, so they will be discussing it. But this is for you all to either provide direction, tell them, don't worry, you know, don't bother, we don't, we don't like the idea, or yes, we think it's a good idea, the board should take it up and, and consider it. So we're just seeking direction on that. Here are the maps, this is the existing north tiers and the south tiers, and I think I have a, this is the zoom in of that boundary line. So right now, this yellow line is the line between north and south. So here is Houston Hart coming right through there. And this, the, the boundary jogs around, but it's roughly Third and Fourth Street. And so what this proposal that, that was brought up was to move it to Harris, which is the north-south boundary line for addressing in the city. Everything south of Harris is, you know, South Chadburn or South Oaks. Everything north is the north side, and so.
That's the whole premise behind this, is because at several of the meetings, people don't understand, if North Chadburn starts at Harris Street, and their, but their property is considered North Chadburn, but the funding is from the southern tiers, even though it's called North Chadburn. And that's the confusion, is that Harris line is a division line, creating a north and a south Chadburn. And yet we have a north and a south tiers zone that don't tie in to the north and south Chadburn language.
That's right, and my understanding is when this was created, the, the idea was basically the downtown is the south tiers and everything else was the north. And so this was sort of a rough approximation at the time of, of where people felt the boundary was between downtown and non-downtown. And so that's, I think that's the history of why the boundary ended up where it was. And obviously, that's kind of debatable, you know, what, what is downtown and where is that line? But again, this is the, the proposal to move it down to Harris, just looking for your direction. The other piece of this is the nonprofit discussion. You may recall, I think it was back in August, revision to the tiers policies came to you all, and the policy on nonprofits was changed. Prior to that, nonprofits could not get funding through the tiers. It was changed in the north tiers, still no nonprofits in the south, but in the north tiers, the policy was changed to say that.
That was done in 2017. Yes, sir.
Okay. It was in the recent change. And the, in the north, so right now in the north, a nonprofit can get incentive funding for improvements to their property in the north, but it does require a finding that it has an economic benefit to the community, and it does require a supermajority vote by both the board and the city council to authorize funding for a nonprofit.
The whole idea behind tiers is to create additional property tax dollars. So the idea that we would have an area that we would be willing to give money to a business, an organization who brings no property tax dollars to the tiers zone, does not make sense. The whole idea is that increased property values bring increased dollars into the tiers bucket of money. That's the whole premise behind tax increment reinvestment zone. And that's the reason the request is, to make sure that both in the northern and the southern, that only if you're a taxpaying business owner, are you allowed to submit requests from the tiers bucket of money. Yes, sir.
So it was 2017, it was one of the first councils I was on. I remember Brenda made the motion to include the south zone and exclude nonprofits. The reason I spoke against that, and I remember it very clearly, was there's discussion about there are some development companies that come in as a nonprofit and buy property, re-converne it, then kick it out as pro, you know, as properties that then can be developed. But we have never seen that as the case.
Ever.
And, you know, so I will, I will take the blame for that. That was my reason, was to protect that opportunity. But in the five years that I've been here, I've never seen that, even anybody talk about it. And I think it does make sense to go ahead and remove nonprofits from eligibility.
That's really simple.
And again, just as with the first piece of this on the boundary, this is just for discussion and direction. It will, the policy change will have to go back to the board and then come to you.
All right, I think if there's any, yes Karen, sorry, couldn't see your hand.
I would just like to point out, since we're discussing the relative merits of profit versus nonprofit, that Shannon is now a designated nonprofit.
And that's been since.
And that we factor that into the, anything that we prescribe.
Well, let me refresh your memory on that, because here's the deal. When the tiers zone was created, the idea was that the north would receive lots of additional funds because the new Walmart was being purchased and was going to be done. And at that point in time, Shannon had not taken the real estate into a nonprofit status. And so there was a consideration for those two zones because you had increased dollars coming from a new Walmart, and you were going to have Shannon expansion and Shannon real estate dollars. Then somewhere maybe 2018, Shannon pulled all of their real estate into a nonprofit real estate fund. And so the equalization of those two things became very lopsided. And so that's what the south had counted on in terms of fueling the tiers bucket of money. And so that's what happened.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So if we change this boundary line here, on Harris, is Shannon going to be on this north?
Doesn't matter, Shannon doesn't pay a penny into this.
I know, I know, but would the line show where they would be eligible as a nonprofit to get some monies?
Yeah, if you don't vote to eliminate it.
Right, if we don't vote to do that, okay, that's what I needed to know.
Go Lucy.
Go Lucy, that's it, exactly.
Go girl!
I just woke up.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, for, yes, quick.
For the simple-minded me, I like Harris because it's the dividing line.
It is, it's north.
Yeah, it, so.
Whether it should be or not, it is.
I was going to say, it just, to me, it makes it easier to say, yeah, north is here, south is here, because every, the addressing is, is that way, so.
It, it doesn't matter from a, you know, anybody, their address isn't going to change. It doesn't impact anything like that, it's just policy. Okay, with that, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, we're going to take a break.
Jeez, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Let's call it a 12-minute break?
12 minutes.
12 minutes.
53 a.m., and we will call this meeting, if you will, back to order. And we will start with item E, I believe. Yes, item E is first reading and public hearing of an ordinance extending the temporary changes to Chapter 12, planning and development Article 12.04 signs in the city code of ordinances to allow additional time for preparation of permanent amendments to the San Angelo sign ordinance. And John, you're on.
Thank you. You may recall, a couple of years ago, we, we made some changes to the sign ordinance based on a court case that was at the Fifth Circuit that, that basically made parts of our sign ordinance unconstitutional, so we made some quick fixes to that.
Describe what that was.
Basically, the main point was that you could no longer treat on-premise signs, so like a business sign, differently than a billboard, an off-premise sign. And so we modified our ordinance to basically say, those signs are interchangeable. We still have rules for billboards, but a billboard now can advertise something that's on that same site or off that site. But similarly, on a business property, the smaller signs that are allowed on a business, those could also advertise for a McDonald's or whatever's on the site, or it could advertise something offsite. So we got rid of that onsite, offsite distinction.
That we did because state ordinance says, state law requires that?
There was a court case that said, basically, you can't make that distinction any longer. So we made that change to our ordinance, but you all made it temporary and said, this will be temporary until the end of the year, at which point, the hope was we would bring back permanent changes that looked a little more comprehensively at what changes needed to be made. Well, subsequent to that, the Supreme Court took up that case. And so we had that extent, we asked you all to extend that another year. Well, the Supreme Court decided that case, and they partly reversed the decision, but partly remanded it back to the lower court to look at it again with some new direction. And so because of that, it's still sort of up in the air. We're waiting on it to go back to that lower court, so we're asking for another extension. We don't want to bring you a bunch of sign ordinance changes that in six months will change again. to bring you a bunch of sign ordinance changes that in six months will change again because of this court case that's still in, in process. And so we're asking for another extension. Uh, our hope is to complete those changes to the sign ordinance over the next year. Uh, but in this, we've asked for a two-year extension so that we don't have to keep coming back every year if the court keeps dragging their feet on making a decision.
We're relooking at it, um, based off of that discussion. I know that there are other issues with our sign ordinance that people would like to have discussed or reviewed or reconsidered. So I would like to, um, make sure that what we're doing as we're waiting for the courts to make a decision, that we spend the time and effort to relook at our sign ordinance-
Sure.
And make sure that we still like what the sign ordinance says, um, look at recommendations from citizens in terms of things that they think need to be changed in the sign ordinance. And let's use it as an opportunity to re-review the sign ordinance, if you will.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Yes, Karen, um, full agreement. In fact, one step further, I'd like to inquire, um, whether there would be any interest in having a, a citizen committee that would help with the review process. I know that there are people in my district that are very interested in serving in that capacity. Um, just a thought.
Yes, Steph wouldn't have a problem with that. We, we often do that with ordinances like this, uh, looking at revisions, um, having a, a group, a stakeholder group that we could put together to, to help provide input.
So, uh, we'll go ahead and create a citizen stakeholder group. If there's anyone from any of your districts that you would like to recommend or inform them of this, uh, re-review, please let John James know, and we will start to try to put together a citizen stakeholder group on sign ordinance review.
Do we have to make a motion on this one?
Need action on this?
Yes, he does.
Yes, this, and all this is doing today is extending the, the temporary changes to the ordinance, uh, out for another two years.
Yeah.
So move.
So move by Harry, seconded by Tommy. Any public comment?
Susan Mertz, single District Five, and I would like to thank the council for agreeing to have a citizens review committee made up of diverse interests throughout our city to review our sign ordinance. Thank you so very much.
Further public comment?
It's to the heart of Zane White, District Six. This gets to the heart, my comments earlier, and my comments for the last several months regarding this Supreme Court decision excuse that's been used, actually two separate Supreme Court decisions that have been given by the city that have absolutely nothing to do. Anybody with any reading comprehension at all that has integrity can simply read those decisions. Again, those Supreme Court decisions are Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, that was in 2015. The other is a 2022 decision, City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin LLC. These are content, primarily content-related issues. Okay? They don't have anything to do with the Cactus Hotel sign. Uh, if, if they do, I've been asking for months and months, and all of you know it. Just tell me different. Show, show the city of San Angelo that I'm wrong. This business of, yeah, the, all of this vague stuff about, yeah, you know, there's, there's a Supreme Court this, there's, yeah, we gotta get back, you know, there's change. That's not gonna work. If you're gonna dis- dispute what I'm saying, you need to lay out some facts. And if this attorney can't get it done, you need to bring in somebody else. Bring in the A.G., bring in a D.A. that can actually interpret those laws correctly. Because this is just another deal using these Supreme Court decisions to kick this down the road. And I believe there's an agenda, that there are people being protected by this smokescreen, and it's gonna come to a stop. You people need to put your money where your mouth is. Have someone do a five-minute presentation to prove me wrong. Until then, I'm gonna keep coming back till you get it straight.
Further public comment? Seeing none, uh, we will take a vote on the motion. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes seven, zero. We will move into item F, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for P.D. 22-03 to rezone from the zero lot line, twin home and town home, single-family residential and low-rise multifamily residential zoning districts to a planned development zoning district to allow an underlying base zoning of zero lot line, twin home and town home, single-family residential with the additional use of single-family homes, subject to development standards outlined in the ordinance being 37.5 acres located southeast of Valley View Boulevard and Stone Canyon Trail. John?
Thank you. A- as you mentioned, this is a rezoning. This is the property here. Um, this is Valley View and College Hills, so that gives you a, kind of an idea of where it is. You've seen this a couple of times over the last few years, uh, as development trends change, as properties change hands. Um, this property, they've looked at a couple of different models, and so this is another, uh, change in this area. Uh, this is in the future land use plan as neighborhood. That's, that's not changing. Uh, you can see the current zoning on the property. The, the front part is RS3. Uh, it does allow those townhomes and, uh, that type of development. The back part is RM1, which allows apartment, uh, development. And so, uh, one of the key pieces of this change is that it would change it to allow, um, multiple different kinds of single-family development, but would no longer allow the apartment development. We did send out our notices, forty notices in total, uh, four in support, two in opposition. I will say that we received a number of phone calls about this from, uh, property owners in the area, um, and largely when we explained what this was doing, uh, basically allowing single-family homes on slightly smaller lots than is normally allowed, but getting rid of the apartment zoning. Uh, most of the, the people who called into us were satisfied with that answer. Uh, largely, their concern over the years has been with the apartment zoning, uh, that was originally allowed on this property. This is the preliminary plat that has already been approved for this area, uh, and so that, that is not changing. Um, some of these lots were originally, uh, envisioned as zero lot line, uh, lots where one, one side of the house would be right on the property line, and those are slightly narrower lots because of that. Uh, basically, what they're looking at is the opportunity to do single-family homes that aren't on the property line, uh, so moving them over on the lot, but still having them on these narrower lots, uh, which are 45 feet wide instead of, uh, the 50 feet. Um, you can see here, the, in the, the colored areas, those are plats that have already been approved, final plats. Uh, they have not all been filed yet, uh, but those are, I mean, basically, they could file those plats and begin development, uh, as soon as they wanted to. Uh, and so, uh, they're looking at the rest of this that hasn't been finally platted, but as you saw in the previous, has already been preliminarily platted. Uh, so at this point, they're not looking at changes to any of this in, in terms of layout, uh, of the area. So these are, this is kind of the summary, and, and the reason you see the red, this is what was proposed to the Planning Commission, and they made some changes. Uh, staff is supportive of those changes that the Planning Commission made, but I wanted to leave those on here just so you could see what their discussion was. Um, again, one of the main things is, is allowing 45-foot-wide lots instead of the 50 that's normally required for a single-family home. It also reduces the front setback, uh, to 15 feet, allowing them a little closer. Uh, it still requires a 25-foot setback for a garage. The problem we see, if, if homes are built up to closer than 25 feet, you start to get cars that park and block, you know, there's not enough room to park cars, uh, in front of the house. So garages will still have to be back 25 feet, but the rest of the house can come up 15 feet. Uh, that gives them a little bit more development area on these smaller lots. Uh, single-family home lot size overall would stay the same, so the lots will have to be a little deeper to make up for them being narrower. Um, our normal, uh, ordinance requires a floor area ratio, uh, of .6, which means basically you can't cover more than 60% of the lot with buildings. They've asked it for, uh, they've asked for 70% coverage, um, and so that's what was approved by the Planning Commission. So, uh, again, similar to zero lot line homes, a little bit more of the lot would be covered by the home, so slightly smaller yards, uh, around that. Uh, this area was, as I mentioned, originally zoned for multifamily, and as you may recall, under our new sidewalk ordinance, multifamily areas require sidewalks. So we had recommended in, including sidewalks, um, given that the density is higher and, and you're putting more homes in a smaller area, um, that that seemed to make sense. The Planning Commission said, no, if we're rezoning to RS-type zoning, which doesn't require sidewalks, we should stick with that, w- what's in the sidewalk ordinance. And so, uh, that's been removed. Um, one of the staff's concerns that are reflected by eight and nine here, what we originally recommended, um, one of the concerns we have is that they're developing these areas, and so it's creating traffic up Stone Canyon, uh, and by not connecting Valley View over and by not extending College Hills, you're funneling all of that traffic up Stone Canyon. And that's one of the complaints we heard from, um, some of the neighbors. Um, we had recommended a provision that, uh, subsequent plats, let me go back to this map, if they start to plat any of this area or any of this area, they would have to extend College Hills and Valley View as part of the next phases of plats. In other words, they couldn't plat out an area like this, and then this, and avoid creating the College Hills or Valley View. Um, after discussion at, at the meeting with the developer, um, I think the Planning Commission was comfortable that their intent is fully to, to move forward with that, and we probably have other, uh, we have other ways to prevent that from happening through the subdivision ordinance. And so the Planning Commission felt that those, uh, numbers eight and nine requiring those road connections immediately were not necessary. Uh, and staff is comfortable with that recommendation as well. Uh, this is in your packet. I won't go through all of this, uh, but this just kind of compares the different requirements in our ordinance if you're in single-family homes, duplex, RS3, RM1, and then this is the proposed PD. And you can see in red are where the, the significant changes in the proposed planned development from what's allowed, the primary one being that lot size of 45 foot wide. Um, and then the, the setback as well. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for John James? Tommy?
John, have we had any input from public safety folks, specifically fire? I, I'm assuming we're gonna be increasing number of homes just because, uh, that, that would appear to be the, the ultimate goal here. Did, did we have input from fire department of any concerns that they had just from public safety standpoint?
No, but I will point out again that, um, let me go back to this. Their proposal for the total number of lots hasn't changed from the preliminary plat that's already approved. And if they did want to redo this in a way that tried to squeeze a few more in, i- it wouldn't add that many more lots. And compared to the apartment zoning that's already on the site, that would add a lot more people and a lot more traffic. So this reflects actually a reduction in the total density that could be allowed there.
Any other questions or comments for John on this issue, then?
Mayor, I'd move approval.
Wait.
All right.
Here we go.
We still don't have green zones here, uh, green space.
We do not. We've, we've been meeting as staff with discussions about, uh, requirements for that, but, uh, under our current ordinances, we have no capability of requiring any, uh, any sort of parkland a- as part of new developments. And again, as I mentioned, that preliminary plat has already been approved, uh, years ago. Uh, and so, e- even if we had new rules in place today, they would be exempt from that, having already gotten their approval.
My main point is we need to move faster on getting something established that provides for the green spaces in areas such as this.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, there is a motion for approval, a second.
I'm thinking about second.
No, they have, I will second at them. And public comment, please?
Andrea Stupla, uh, District One. Um, green space is really great. Um, I live in that area. I drive down Valley View, and I take that curve and go up College Hills all the time, almost every day. Um, we have a lot of people in that area that are runners. So I'm just saying, if, to consider, once Valley View and College Hills, I mean, once Valley View has been, um, developed, if you could put in sidewalks. Because right now, the runners, I mean, they're risking their lives, um, when they're making that turn and going up the hill, um, towards that little Walmart. Also, the green space would be great if we could incorporate it somehow into that area, because there's a lot of deer and wild turkeys that live in that area. And if you live in, um, Southland, you, you know, because they visit your neighborhood all the time. But it, we're pushing them out. And, um, they can cause a lot of wrecks, right? But if we had some green space, at least they could hang out. I mean, just consider it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm James Duncan. I'm here on behalf of the, the applicant, and I just wanted to make myself available if there are any questions. I think, uh, most of the issues were already addressed. Um, I'll make a couple of comments based on what's already been said. Um, we did, last year, ask to rezone the northern part to RS3. Quite frankly, that, that was a mistake on our part. We've had some wrong assumptions. I guess everyone at the time was focused on the sidewalk, uh, walk ordinance, and we were focused more on drainage. And we also thought that we didn't care about apartments up there, but what we thought was included was single-family usage, and turns out it wasn't. Um, we asked to redo this to try to have the single family allowed. Also, we thought we were reducing the, the density or having larger lots, because the builders that we've talked to are not crazy about trying to design zero lot line homes. They're harder to design. I personally am a fan of zero lot line, but it is more difficult to do it well. And so, rather than having them try to design a, a zero lot line and possibly on a 40-foot lot, we just said, they, they, they would prefer if they could have a, a standard design, splitting the, the setbacks on either side. Um, regarding our plats that have been done up to now, I, I thought it was worth a little bit of an explanation. When we bought the property, of course, interest meter's starting to tick. Um, we were working, having discussions and intermittent conversations with the nearby landowners about trying to come to a co-op, a cooperative agreement, perhaps splitting costs, putting in at the same time, uh, a joint development of either Valley View or College Hills. Um, those were promising, but have not redu, not produced an, uh, an agreement to go forward jointly. Uh, concurrent with that, we were looking at drainage issues and where not only our detention goes, but the drainage on Valley View was a big consideration, not for the, the improvement of Valley View that's in front of our property, but downstream on the existing prop, part to the east. When we open it up and there's a lot of drainage that comes through there, it's going to increase the amount of storm water that runs off onto that section, which, if that were to be built today, the amount that would flow onto there would exceed the amount that would be allowed within the, the gutter, uh, with, and creating, uh, a deeper and a wider section of water in an area that already has a, has a stormwater some issues. And, so, we've, uh, various city departments have talked to us in that there is a proposal that on some of the city property, they might take a look at regional, uh, drainage and/or detention, and that would help alleviate the concerns. So in the meantime, College Hills had the same factors of trying to work with the, uh, other landowner across the street. landowner across the street, the drainage and detention, and then the, combining that with the fact that where and how that detention and where that, and how that runoff to Valley View is handled, Russell Gully was here and he left, but the design of College Hills, the design of our streets to connect them to College Hills would be impacted by how much water you divert, which direction, and how much you allow to pass through. So to try to get the project going, we stopped short of College Hills to allow some intervening distance that the engineers could have the latitude to make appropriate design adjustments in how those intersections would correct, connect and function. It was not because we desired to delay. Quite frankly, we wanted to start with Valley View, that would have been the most logical point of view, I mean, point to start, and then we also want connectivity for the, for our future residents and everyone else. So I'm available if there are any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any other public comment? With that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to item G, first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, for ongoing projects and capital items. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. I have a couple of budget amendments for you this morning to consider. The first one is for police body cameras, requesting $70,000 to cover the year three cost of that. The second is for overtime expenses for the fire department. We kind of discussed this in the budget hearings, that they would be using some of the charity care money to help out with the peak hours ambulance and overtime expenses, $42,930. And then now we're going into our annual carryovers that are requested by departments for projects that were ongoing but incomplete by the end of fiscal year 2022, so we bring those to you for consideration and approval. The first is for city clerk, trying to carry over about $28,000 for election expenses. The second is for facilities maintenance, for Tom Green County jail inmate work, crews and lighting replacement, $27,397.
If that's a Tom Green County expense, why is it on the city here?
It is a, an agreement, I believe, with Tom Green County, but I think that's a Ron Lewis question.
Ron Lewis, so they might, it is an agreement with the county to share the costs for the TDCJ prisoners, the inmate crew camp that's out near the animal shelter. So that is, yeah, it's not their work crew, it's just the crew that comes from the TDCJ. And we shared, yeah, we shared those expenses through agreement years ago, and we amended some years back, and is still in effect.
Okay, next up is for traffic operations for their flashing yellow arrow project, $42,396.
And what's that? I don't think we remember what that is.
It's the flashing yellow lights that you see in traffic signals, but I think Patrick can probably speak to that.
I mean, I know what it is, I'm asking what the dollars are, and I don't remember having this discussion about them, so.
So we, we do have a project that's moving forward to convert all of our signalized intersections over to the flashing yellow arrow on the left turns. This is just asking council to, to carry over monies from last year so that we can continue that program and continue those advancements. That, that particular department is, that it runs, it runs pretty tight on its funding, so anytime we can bring over some additional funding to continue those projects, we'd like to request those.
Patrick has the next two, if you have any questions on those, so just keep them close. But the next one is for the right-of-way property-related services and street repairs and maintenance, $555,000.
And this is a carryover from the previous year?
Yes, it is. They had funds that they had not expended at year-end, so they're asking to carry them over.
Is it tied to a specific project, or just general?
For general street repairs, Mayor, it's not tied to a particular project. This is the kind of carryover that we, that we do annually. Rio Concho Drive was, happened because of these type of carryovers. We carried over a number of years, finally accumulated enough funds to go and do Rio Concho Drive that had no prior funding available for it.
And the next one for street lighting, the streetlight LED replacement project, I think that's kind of similar to the flashing yellow light project with.
Did we approve a streetlight LED replacement project to begin with?
So this.
Or is that just in the budget, so we didn't know it?
This is a strategy, so our street lighting budget every year has some additional funds that are left over that we just don't expense. These are the streetlights that shine at night, light the roadways around town, and we pay AEP for the electrical use of, of those streetlights. What we're proposing here is to carry over this money that we usually don't carry over, because we have just recently started a program with AEP to convert all of our, our metal halide streetlights over to LED. So what we would propose to use this particular money for is to expedite that program. There's a certain, so any lights that go out or need repair, AEP is fronting the cost to change those over to LEDs. What we would use this for is to expedite that and pay AEP to come in and replace streetlights to, or convert, streetlights over to LED in those areas that streetlights are already working. So what we're not doing is we're not having a hodgepodge of LED lights and metal halide lights, and then another LED light. We can do areas at a time so that there's some, some consistency across those streets, both from a safety perspective and just an aesthetic appeal. But we want to start utilizing some of these residual funds at the end of the year to, to move that project ahead a little bit and start seeing those savings from the LED from the current street lighting.
How much savings?
It's, it varies depending on the type of streetlight there is. We have a whole worksheet that will, that spells out what that return will be on those investments, so we're making sure that within five to six, seven months, that we would actually see that investment come back from that transfer. This is just an easy way of using already budgeted money in order to, to start making those transitions.
Next up, we have for the Parks Division, Kirby Park, concrete slab repair, sidewalk renovation projects, and equipment purchases, they're requesting to carry over $59,000 for those projects. And Animal Services requesting to carry over $13,549 for maintenance projects for damages and for their computer replacement program. The Fire Department requesting to carry over $6,465 for their MDT project for their rugged notebooks.
Can we describe what that is? I'm not sure on MDT.
Yes, I believe it's their tablets.
Does anybody on the board, anybody up here know what MDT is?
Chief Brody's here to speak to that.
And the rugged notebook?
Morning, Council. If you recall, a couple of months back, I came to you requesting money for the purchase of MDT, Moda Motor, Mobile Data Terminal. See, I can't even say it right. But it's basically the computer inside of our units for our ambulances and our fire trucks. We had a little bit of extra money left over that I wanted to bring forward for contingency money whenever we go to move, to install the project, there's always something that you miss, and I wanted a little bit of contingency to complete it.
Next up is $361,000 for the State Office Building for HVAC improvements at the Chase State Building, and $8,083.
Does that come from rent, or is that in the maintenance budget?
I'll ask Bob Bluthart to come up and speak to that.
Morning, Mayor, Council. This would be capital improvements, which would be in the capital budget, not the operation. We have a fairly decent maintenance budget in the 201 fund to take care of the day-to-day stuff, but this would be to replace the 11 units we talked about that you approved at November 15, and probably we're gonna start on the next years, because we like to do eight to 10 a year for the next four to five years.
Thank you.
Texas Bank Sports Complex requesting to cover, carry over $8,083 for gates, fencing and lights out there at the complex. Airport requesting to carry over $75,000 for weed killer, cover vehicles, power washer and bathroom remodel at the airport. Solid Waste requesting to carry over $85,203 for landfill permitting and design, and stormwater.
Is that for existing landfill?
I believe it's for the upcoming permit, but I'll ask Patrick to speak to that.
That is correct. It's, it's monies that we anticipate using in the permitting process moving forward with the new landfill proposal that we're looking at and, and vetting right now.
And finally, stormwater, design and infrastructure improvement projects in the amount of almost $239,000.
This is similar to the street and bridge money that we ask to carry over. Every year, we roll over funds within our capital projects, so that eventually we'll have enough money in order to do a, a substantial stormwater improvement project. This type of money is what we're looking at with Sunset Lake and the Parkview Lakes and, and some of those stormwater improvement projects. That's how we get this money accumulated.
What's the, what's the total sum of that amount, money that you've accumulated?
So every year, we budget about $700,000 in that account, and then we roll over. So we just had a large expenditure with Avenue Peapond, that's how we paid for a large portion of that project, so now we're starting over essentially. So 238 is, is basically the beginning of, of that savings that we have for future projects.
And I believe that's the last carryover amendment, so if you have any other questions?
Any questions, any additional questions on these budget amendments? Moved approval for Tommy, seconded by Tom. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the budget amendments, say yes. I said, say yes. Are you not listening?
Yeah, we are. We wanted to be fine.
Okay, so that would be seven, zero, passing. Okay, we will go on to, no closed session, so we'll move up into the follow-up and administrative issues. Consideration of approving various board nominations, Civic Events Advisory Board, Dale Velazquez, mayor to third term, ending December 2024. The Park Commission, Heidi Brooks at large to first term, Bitsy Stone at large to fourth term, and Allison Watkins at large to a second term, all ending January 2027. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Debbie Wilson is SMD4 to third term, ending December 2024. Is there a motion for approval of all of those board nominations? So moved by Harry.
Second.
Second by Lucy. Any public comment on those board nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, you did it right.
I didn't know we were gonna do yes or aye.
All right. Motion approved, seven, zero. Any announcements or consideration for future agenda items? If not, a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Move adjourn, second by Tom. Public comment on adjournment? Seeing none, all of those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we kind of got it. It passes, so seven, zero.
Buffalo Soldier, 11:45, it's 15 minutes after this meeting, if you all want to be there, okay?